All right, we're going to call the committee of the whole to order. Present are most members of the committee. I'll move to excuse the absence of Dan O'Malley, Councilman Dan O'Malley.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Also then move to approve the minutes of our April 18th meeting. How old a week ago tonight?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. And with that, we'll start with you, Sean, if that's okay.
Sorry, we keep mixing up on you every week, so.
No, no.
We'll be consistent.
Keep us honest, I appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'll start where I've started the last several meetings, which is with our agenda that we've been diligently working through over the last several weeks. So following the introduction of the legislation that's pending before you on April 4th, we've had a series of committee of the whole meetings scheduled that are outlined here on the screen. We've, of course, worked through the April 11th, April 18th, and just working through various elements and components of the project. We are now working our way to April 25th. This was, at the time this agenda was produced, was the last meeting. I know we have attended, we have a hold on an August 28th meeting, I'm sorry, April 28th meeting as well for this Thursday. The purpose of the meeting this evening was to build upon any open items that we had from the April 18th meeting, related to the residential, the Curtis Block, the retail, the community space, the parking garage. But most importantly, we wanted to introduce you to Roundstone, to Michael Schroeder, the president of that company, who's here in the audience here this evening with his wife, Molly, as well as Chris Turk, their general counsel, is here somewhere there, he's right behind him, here this evening to let you get a chance to get to know them, get to know a little bit about their company, of course, ask some questions of them and their desire to continue to grow here in Lakewood, which we're incredibly excited about and really a signature anchor to this overall development. So that's first and foremost. I do want to take just a second to remind everybody, we're, there are some new faces here in the audience this evening. This is the term sheet. This is the beginning. We still have a lot of process to go through. There's a lot of detail surrounded development as far as what do things look like, what are, how is it all going to be final, those final design details. We have a planning and zoning process, it'll take us through that, through our planning commission, through our architectural board review, as well as any other boards and commissions that they may, this may touch along the way, along with city council along the way. Ultimately, all of this will go off to those boards and commissions and neighborhood meeting process. It'll then come back to city council in the form of development agreement and the form of a funnel development plan. This is the starting point, though, to just get us out that gate and get us moving towards that project. So with that, I believe I'm going to hand it to Brent, who's going to, I'm sorry, to Colby? Colby to say a few words, and then we'll move over to Mr. Schroeder and his team.
Thank you, Sean. We just wanted to address a couple of things, a couple of questions that came out of last week's meeting and just give you some information that we were able to obtain over the last week, starting with the parking garage question and what could be done to facilitate future development vertically above that parking garage. We've been working with Donley here locally on pricing that structure, and the way it is currently designed is kind of in the most efficient way to provide the most efficient parking. It's a long, long span construction, so in order to accommodate the vertical component in the future, there would have to be either transfer girders on the long span construction. That's the most efficient way to keep and maintain the parking count, but it's also the most expensive. So we could go to a short span construction type, which would impact the parking count, which we'd have to study further on the layout. And it's less expensive, but it's probably still about a three and a half million dollar premium to do that. In addition to that, I think some of our bigger concerns is just disruption of those existing tenants in the future. There are some utility coordination that we'd have to take into account, in particular if it were residential and there would be a bunch of core drilling for plumbing stacks and things like that. So it is feasible at a cost, and, you know, we'd have to understand the impact on the parking if we switch to a short span construction type. But that's what we got on our back and forth with Donley over the last week or so, so just wanted to kind of give an update on that. And also, after we hear from Roundstone, I think we want to walk you through some of our more detailed views of the plaza and kind of why we feel strongly about its location in the project and kind of walk you through some zoomed in images from the previous images you saw last week and the week before. But before we run through that, I think we want to turn it over to Roundstone for that introduction.
That's for you.
It is for you? In a moment, but not yet. This is the first test, actually.
Thanks for the help. Well, first of all, thank you for the invite to come speak to you and introduce our company to you. Appreciate that opportunity. So maybe I thought I would start with just telling you briefly, who is Roundstone? And then after that, just open it up for any questions you may have and kind of tell you why we've decided that this project with Casto and the City of Lakewood is something we want to do and we think can help Roundstone continue to prosper and succeed. So first of all, who is Roundstone? Broadly, we're a health insurance company. We're a private company. We came to Lakewood and we purchased the old Church of Christ Scientist in 2015, spent a year remodeling it and moved in with our employees there in '16. We've been around for about 17 years, and we do business in 40 or so states across the country. We have over 100 employees now, I guess the last count was 125. And we're growing rapidly. Last couple of years, about 30% a year, both in terms of new customers and employees. We entered the pandemic with 60 employees and we're coming out twice that, so a lot of rapid growth. You may ask, why is that? You know, a lot of health insurance companies out there, you know, why is Roundstone growing the way it is? First of all, the employer health insurance market, the mayor probably could tell you, she used to work in that market a little bit, is in a difficult place. It's a stressed marketplace. And so our company, we approach things a little different. We like to fashion ourselves a better alternative to the middle market, an employer with 25 to a couple thousand employees. And we, and as you see from this website we have up here, the reason we believe we're a better alternative is we deliver lower costs over the long term for these employers. And we do so by doing three things differently than the traditional market. We give the employers where their costs are coming from, we let them know, what is the cost drivers for your company? We give them the control to manage those costs from a plan design or cost containment, but we give them the ability to manage those costs. And then lastly, when they don't spend the money they fund during the year, their estimated cost, we give them back the difference. So over the long term, that strategy has delivered very good outcomes. And the marketplace is slowly moving our direction. We compete against the largest health insurance companies in the world. You know, we're on a daily basis quoting against United Healthcare and Aetna and these large companies. But we do believe we're a better alternative and our employees are very much engaged in working towards that mission we have of affordable healthcare for all. And they try very hard to deliver those better outcomes. So that's who we are, but if you walked into our shop, we'd look a lot like any other insurance company. We have underwriters and claims adjusters and people that are doing the accounting and we even, I even gave in and hired a few sales guys, girls, and, but other than that, we look pretty much like a traditional insurance company. We're private, family owned business, and we've enjoyed, I will say, the move to Lakewood for us has been great. We, our employees love it here and I like it here, it's close to my home, and so it's been a good place for us. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Mr. Schroeder, thank you for joining us this evening. I think one of the first things I approved as a member of council was the redevelopment of that old Christian Science church, and it's beautiful, it's a great space. I understand you've had to sort of rotate your staff in and out in order to be able to accommodate people in the space, and if you could speak to why, why the need for this sort of rapid growth and how we can have confidence in that going forward, I think we'd appreciate that as a start off, and then we'll move to my colleagues and any questions they may have.
Well, the growth is coming from new customers, couple hundred a year, and with new customers, you need new people to do the job. Yes, we're in a hybrid environment in our office space where we're, half the workforce is in the building any one week and the other half is working remote. But even with that, the current space will only accommodate, you know, at full capacity a little over 100 employees. And so we're beyond that at this point. So if I, if we wanted to come back into the office 100%, we could not do that. And that does not contemplate what we see as being growth over the next three to five years of, you know, at least another 60 or so employees to closer to 200. So at that point, we'd really be stretching it. And, you know, I'm not even talking about conference rooms and other functionality that we're kind of right now not being able to take advantage of in the current space. Current space is 23,000 square feet, 22,000 square feet. The new space we're going to is three times that size.
Colleagues, any questions? Councilman Bullock and then Councilman Baker.
Thanks, Mr. Schroeder, for being here and your wife as well. We appreciate your investment in Lakewood, and I was serving with John when we helped to facilitate the reinvestment, the adaptive reuse of the First Christian Church of Christ Scientist, and I'm not going to, I didn't say that quite correctly, but that was fantastic. Really love what you did with taking an existing building that has character. I don't know if that's historically demarcated or not, but it certainly has got, I'm sure, okay, it is, my colleague says, certainly contributes to the historic character of our downtown district, so thanks for doing that. You know, I serve on a board of an organization, nonprofit, that's looking for a new CEO, and I think we're close to making an offer. And that gentleman for this other nonprofit said, coming from the private sector, that there's a war on talent. And I think by what that, but what he meant by that was there's kind of an arms race for talent in employment circles. And I guess my question for you is, do you see Lakewood as a natural home to a lot of the talented workforce that is in your company, employed by our company, potentially recruited and retained by your company to be residents in the region?
Yeah, I probably should call my wife Molly up here because she does all our recruiting for the company. But yes, a lot of our employees are from Lakewood or move here. We've had more than one employee who maybe was living in a place like Streetsboro and likes the job, likes the company, and then relocates to Lakewood. But yeah, a lot of our employees do live in Lakewood. My son, who works for the company, lives in Lakewood. But we draw, though, employees from all over northeast Ohio, pretty much like, I think, any business. And so we have employees that live down south, say, in Strongsville, and we have folks that even live out in Chagrin Falls and things like that. And even, I think we have someone from Vermillion. So we do draw from all over northeast Ohio, but a good, good segment of our employees are Lakewood. And I will tell you this, when we, I do know when we post positions, and I think we have 10 open positions today, the local Lakewood folks pick up, they follow it pretty close because they like that lifestyle of being able to walk to the office, and we have more than a few employees that do that. So yeah, we, you know, Lakewood's a great, you know, it's a great community. Hey, that's, northeast Ohio is a great community. That's why Roundstone is here, and we think it's a good place to build an insurance company.
Yeah, that's superb, and, you know, I, you are a natural fit, I think, a natural strategic partner for long term. You grow, we do what cities do. I would argue, you know, we're a city of homes. Arguably, our core industry is to produce quality of life. And in a pandemic or post pandemic environment where people can live here, work anywhere, where do you want to live? Well, quality of life is going to be a key driver of that. And so that's been a focus of mine and I think all of ours for many, many years, and so you're a real testament to that. So it's a real natural fit, from my perspective, that you'd want to be in the heart of this exciting downtown development. I think my perspective is we're working to get to yes on this project and to do a thorough, high-quality version of this development. I think you're hearing some questions from me and other council members, but our goal is to come to a mutual agreement with all parties and partners, and so thank you for your commitment and for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Michael and Molly, and also have to, your council's here too, so you've got to remember our lawyers. And I see that you went to Ohio State Law School, so, you know, Bullock's a Notre Dame fan, so in September we'll get some victories there. But thank you for being here. Couple of questions, you know, and thank you for your continued interest in Lakewood. Your current space, I mean, you did a beautiful job with the building. You know, I think there was some push to kind of ironically use that for parking at some time before you guys came in, you know, so it was preserved and your company did a fabulous job propping it up. What do you plan to do when you, you know, move to this new site?
I'll either lease it to another company or sell it. There seems to be quite a demand for it because as soon as the article regarding our move came out, I think I got four different phone calls. So I'd imagine there'll be another business or some other organization there, not too far after we move down to the new building.
Thank you. And then the plans for the current building, so as I understand it, there are three floors you're purchasing, you plan to move into two and then potentially lease one for a couple of years and then with the growth pattern to get all three of them?
That's right, and we're growing a little quicker than my initial conversations with, so whether or not we have to take all three by the time this is done, I don't know. But if we don't need the all three, then we would, we would lease the one floor, yeah.
Okay, and then, and lastly, you know, I know, you know, you mentioned you go against the big guys, United Health and Aetna. You know, I know private, it just seems like smaller, you know, privately held companies, sometimes there's, you know, acquisition targets, right? And the thought of, so I guess could you talk about your plans as an owner of a privately held company? And I'm sure you're getting your target of acquisition chatter sometimes, but I'd like to kind of hear your philosophy on it and what you and your wife see as your future here.
Yeah, that's not our objective. We're, our objective is to build a sustainable organization that can last beyond, you know, my presence or, you know, even Molly's presence. You know, my son works at the company, I have two younger children, one who has already indicated that she'd like to join the company. But whether it's family leading the company or just, you know, quality leadership, my objective is to build a sustainable organization. Now you might say, hey, that's a nice answer, Mike, but come on, you don't want to sell it and sail off into some exotic island. You know, I've been fortunate in my career to be involved in some other transactions, so I kind of been there, done that. I see the downside when you do that. I also see, what do you do next or what happens next? So I don't have this, I'm unfortunate in that I don't have a need to sell this business. I am fortunate in that I've had opportunities to have transactions and feel good about that. But right now, the challenge that I see in front of me, in front of our company, is to build a truly sustainable organization that's a good community partner, that takes care of the customers and takes care of the employees, and do that for the long term. And that's the legacy that I'm trying to build for Roundstone and maybe even myself a little bit.
And thank you, because that, you know, we're, you know, the city's being asked to invest in you and you're being asked to invest in the city, so it's just good to kind of hear your perspective on that. Lastly, and I, you know, there's been lots of discussions about kind of the public space on the site, whether it's kind of tucked in the middle or more on the corner. Do you have a thought, or are you just excited to have kind of a cool communal space and kind of as the front door to your building?
I have an opinion on that. I think the plaza in the center would, is more community focused, will do a better job of creating the community that this space is intending to deliver. So I've always seen it with the plaza in the center, and that's what I would, that's what I want to happen. And again, I just think it'd be used more, I think it lends itself to the idea of community more. You know, our company, we have our French steps that we use, and we have, we cook some hamburgers and hot dogs out there and sometimes listen to music at the library, and those kind of things, to me, lend themselves better to the plaza than they would on the corner.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schroeder, and I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Councilman. So to your point about sort of trying to keep the company within, keep it, keep it local, keep it yours, along that line, I guess I'm curious what your expectations for growth are. You talk about possibly occupying that second floor sooner rather than later. I hadn't intended to ask this, but I have to ask, is there any possibility of an additional floor needed for that building, one? And then, and then two, is there, from your perspective, and I'm a nonprofit guy who works in government as well, so perhaps I'm overstepping here, but where, where do you see is the maximum number of employees for an organization like yours to where it's right sized, from your perspective?
Yeah, that's a great question. Let me answer the second question first because I think it plays into the first one, and it's something that we have looked at. And I'm a big believer of collaboration and teamwork, and that's why as soon as we could go back to hybrid, we have. But I'm also, I also recognize, and I think it's a fellow, an author by the name of Malcolm Gladwell, who wrote about organizations and when they get to certain sizes, and he did everything from classrooms to sports teams and all the way up to companies. And I do think there's an upper limit to a company where after 1,000 employees, do you really, are you really getting any teamwork and collaboration and all that? And so in my mind, I, you know, I think this building, you know, we probably could be in one office building up to about 500 employees. Now that would probably require some hybrid, but that's kind of my upper limit. And the current building that we have here can accommodate that very nicely. But if our company would ever grow to 1,000 employees, then we would have to have two spaces.
And to follow up on the, on the Christian Science Church space, is there no intent to remain there as well as this new space, or?
Not right now, no.
Okay, just wanted to.
There'll be, there'll be some business in there, and that's why perhaps leasing it might be a smarter move, and toss them out if we have to, but.
Because it is so sought after?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's in demand. I'm just saying I have a choice, I could sell it or lease it, maybe I, you know, with your comment, maybe I should lease it and then I could have the, I could get back into it at some point.
Not my word, I won't, I won't overstep. Word two, do you have any comment?
My question really does have to do with the hybrid remote kind of model that's going on right now. I know in some industries, I don't know with yours in particular, especially those that deal with tech, that they have to offer the remote option because they can't get these IT people to come in to work. They'll just go to the next IT job that does offer remote. Do you see that kind of in your recruiting as of lately? Do you see that as a barrier, saying like, hey, we want you folks to be in the office?
We see very few people that want to be 100% remote. We see a lot of people that want a hybrid option, and we can accommodate that, the hybrid option. And we see a fair share of people that are, really want to get back into an office. They've been living in an apartment or someplace and they, they need to get back and socialize and interact with people. But, so that's why I believe the hybrid model isn't going to go away, I don't believe it will, and I think it'll be part of our company's work environment moving forward. But I do not, we're not getting demand saying, yeah, I want to come work for your company, but I never want to see you, I never want to show up, I want to be 100% remote. We're not seeing that very much at all.
You do anticipate that? Oh, I don't want to.
Figure I'd ask the boss, she's the one that deals with that.
Yeah.
She says I'm right on that.
Wow, well, I guess you.
On the record.
You have it on the record. I was going to make that joke, geez, John. But so you see you'll be able to fill up this space, it's not going to be too, too much for you in terms of future planning and how employees are going to want to work?
Not at all.
Councilmember Kepel.
Thank you for being here and for your investment in Lakewood. I just wanted to follow up about, you mentioned doing business in 40 different states. Do, is most of that remote, or do you have folks coming in to town to do business with you? How does that work?
So we distribute our product through retail insurance agencies, and those agencies are the, kind of the local presence for our product. And then we have what we call regional practice leaders, fancy word for a salesperson, and they travel throughout the country. But they're all based here in Lakewood and they hop in a plane for a couple of weeks a month, and they call on those regional agencies to take care of those customers. We do things though, like for instance, if you look, we're having our conference, we call it our Medical Captive Forum, is on the May 18th, and we'll bring in 300, 400 employers from across the country for a full day of cost containment ideas. So there is some interaction locally with our customers and our sales folks are in their offices a lot, so.
To follow up to the chair, so you would, so typically, other than maybe in those conferences, would you say it's accurate to say you're not having a lot of businesses that you do businesses with, customers you do business with coming into Lakewood, staying in the, staying in the area, would, that's not so much part of the model?
Not the employer customers, no. The agents, the insurance agencies, yes, they do visit us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rader, and then we'll move to Councilmember.
Thank you for being here and for partnering with us on this, and thanks for having me at your Christmas party. I think I just sort of.
That's right.
Showed up, one of your employees invited me and quite a lovely.
I recall, yeah. I was glad you, I was glad you made it and you found out where to go.
Yeah, no, that's definitely what I do. So it, well, they actually highlighted for me really well how collaborative your space is and how much you, you know, really drive interaction there and you really pull a lot out of that, like that's a big part. So I totally get when you say, people want to be in the office, I would want to be in your office and, you know, seeing folks face to face, I think with the way you have things set up, and I'm imagining that this will be a similar setup, right? So you're going to try to create a lot of communal space, you create a happy working environment, right?
Yeah, we've started to speak with Demet about that, and I think, feel pretty good we'll be able to deliver on that.
Good. Well, that actually, you know, my real question is, we've got quite a few stages left, right? You're going to be coming back, I'm assuming, for some of the planning and architectural design meetings, you'll want to have input in how the building looks. I mean, you're, you're going to be the largest tenant in this building. I guess I just want to comment on how you feel, are you looking forward to the process? What's it going to look like when the community wants this, the exterior to look something different? Or the planning commission says, wow, you know, that looks great, you know, is that a process you're looking forward to? Are you flexible with how this is going to look? Have you talked about naming rights in the building? Is that something that was part of this discussion so far? Is that something that, like, you're flexible with, you know? And I'm only bringing this up really because part of the whole discussion around the former development was really right sizing and getting it right, and we spent a lot of time in those meetings with the developers to make sure the building really fit the neighborhood and the aesthetic and the scale and all of that. So just want to get your comments on the process here moving forward.
Okay, so what I've seen so far, the drawings that I've seen so far, I like very much and would be very comfortable if that was the outcome verbatim with what was shown. What I like about it, I like the materials, I like how it's some natural materials and all that. So I'm very happy, again, this is just the exterior, nothing on the interior yet, but the exterior of the building, I'm fine with, no problem. The question of whether the planning commission wants something changed, I'd have to see what it is, you know, I mean, I can't, if you came back and say, hey, we want to marry it so it matches identically what the clinic has there, I'm not going to be real fired up about that. But there might be other things you want to change, the color of the stone, I don't, I'm happy to consider it and take a look at it, but again, what's there now, I'm fine with. But again, what's there now, I'm fine with. You had a question about naming. Yeah, my understanding is that our name of our company would be on the, on the top floor. And so we have had that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bullock and then I have a couple.
Thanks, just a couple of follow-ups. Well, first of all, I tried mightily to get the clinic to make a Frank Gehry building, like a real, you know, landmark, so maybe you could do that and it would exceed them and you'd, you'd show them how it's done right. But I, I think it's a good point by my colleague that we work at the speed of community deliberation. I, I remember coming to the architect for the previous developer and I was listening as an audience member and it was probably Architecture Board of Review and I walked up to him later and I said, boy, this is like creative writing with 1,000 assistants, you know? And that must be a lot of fun for an architect to do that. So there's a certain amount of, of poking and prodding that is involved in, in a public-private project like this. So thanks for, in advance, for your, your patience in seeing it through. Question about parking and then a kind of question, comment about the plaza or the square. So I think I saw 260 parking spaces in the garage reserved for Roundstone. I don't know if that's the current count. I thought, I think that's a higher number than what you just described in terms of your growth projections.
The, the parking spaces is 240.
Okay.
And that would accommodate us, you know, growing beyond the 200 employees for sure. But it would be-
And then you have some guests?
It would allow us, if you look at 500 employees there in a hybrid environment, it would allow us to accommodate those employees.
Okay, so up to 500 it could be.
Right.
And can you tell me the number again, that the max capacity of your current location? I just missed what you said.
I think the most we could put in the current place would be about 75 or 80. We have 125 today, so we, we're beyond our capacity. We don't have, they're not all in there, they're, they're hybrid, so, you know, six, if you went into our office any one day, you'd see about 60-some employees.
All right. As I've learned from my colleagues, you know, in a minimum, parking spaces cost 24,000 apiece, so the, the total count is, is a big number to getting the project financials to go through. And they're probably more like 28,000 or 30,000, right? The, so, you know, I'm, I'm interested to, to work on that number and see if there's ways we can find capacity, financial capacity. It may not be from your allotment, but maybe from other portions of the garage where then resources, if they're not needed for the garage, could go to quality somewhere else on the site, but-
Yeah, we, we've spent a lot of time on parking with Casto and with the city. And it's very important to us, primarily because of the demands of the employees. It's a, it's one of the first things they asked when we told them about this new place, will there be parking? You know, historically, the company always had parking for the employees, first in Westlake and now in Lakewood. So we're not in a position to not give our employees parks.
You think, that, you're firm on that number? That's a good, solid estimate?
Yeah.
Okay, that answers my question. And then on the plaza, the, I guess I'll kind of make a comment. What I'm hoping for, I'm sure, I suspect this is going to be a privately owned, I keep calling a public square a public plaza. It's, it's going to be privately owned as far as I understand, most likely, as opposed to it being a city-run park or something. But the spirit, or at least a portion of the spirit, would be that this is a community gathering space, for sure for the, the tenants and the residents that live there, but also everyone. We don't really have a downtown public square or park. Well, we do have a park and, and it's new, so there's actually, that's quite relevant. I mean, connecting those two in a, in a kind of designed way would be wonderful and you could go right up Bell Avenue from this new site to the Sulset Steps. And what I think people responded with the Sulset Steps, there's an experience of being there in Lakewood that just is, is a high impact. And that's exactly why you see so many people take selfie pictures and use it as a visual shorthand for our community and really the region. And so you'll see, I'm not, you know, shooting small craps here, I think we want on this plaza to be like that, that same aha, high-quality experiential moment. And I don't know how you pull it off, that's our designers and our planners and our architects, but as a resident and somebody who has worked through the painful loss of Lakewood Hospital and really is hoping for the, the rebirth of that site to be just as wonderful for our community, that's what we're going for here. So that plaza that would be next to your new building is a big deal to the community as well. And, and so, you know, I'm going to be advocating that we find ways to make it very high quality, that, that it's accessible to programming and, and it also meets your needs and hopefully it's a draw to, to your own employees. So, so the, the physical location of it and the way it works is a big, is a big, big subtopic that I think we're going to be working on. And I hope that is compatible with your vision for, for all of this.
It is. The way you describe its use is how I understand it and how I hope it works out. And I too hope it's a fantastic place.
Iconic, yeah.
Yeah.
Experience.
So, yeah, we, we share the same objective.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you again for being here. I have a couple other little questions if you don't mind. Again, I appreciate your presence. Are there any second-floor tenants contemplated currently? You don't need to get into who they are, you're, you're not there yet, you're, you're just kind of a-
We're not there yet, no.
Okay, waiting to see what your needs are first and then-
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is there any benefit from your perspective, and this is something we've talked about with the term sheet and things like that, to having a hotel in any close vicinity to this, this site? Are, are you in any way or shape or form ever needing clients or others to come into town or anything like that? I guess I'm just curious.
We, we do have some agents, as I mentioned, that do visit us, but I think the hotel would go bankrupt relying on us to-
Okay, fair enough. No, fair enough. It's worth asking. And then it's something we've contemplated in Lakewood for years. And so it's just important for me to understand where, where you come at on, on the idea of a hotel in the center of Lakewood. And then it's important as we go forward together to understand your working relationship with Casto and North Point Realty, if you could speak to that, how you've worked together thus far, how you contemplate that moving forward.
Well, they're the developer that has done this before. Roundstone's a health insurance company and not a developer. And so they, both organizations have very good reputations, been there, done that type of thing. The gentlemen we've worked with have been fantastic and I guess it's been the last, what, six, eight months? And very transparent in the communications and, you know, not everything was, you know, easy or all done from the first conversation, but, you know, was very collaborative and worked well. So I'd say it was a very positive working environment. You know, what, from our perspective, quality, we want quality. We've, we've come to a place where we believe that they're going to deliver quality. And then two, just that they can make it happen. You know, a lot of folks can talk about things, but they actually make it happen. So all good from our perspective. I have friends that are in the development business and I've bounced it off them about these folks and they gave me the thumbs up, so I feel pretty good.
Okay. Well, one piece that I know, Casto's worked in, in Ohio City somewhat and, and block clubs and, and the like are extremely important to, to that area of, of the west side of, of Cleveland. I'd like to think no less important in Lakewood and being the ward three representative, which is where this development would, would, would be, I'm curious to your level of interest and involvement with the local neighborhood. We have a few residents of Marlo and Bell that are here in the audience today. I, I'd love to know kind of what you'd like to do to be able to work with those local residents who've been here, in some cases for decades, and how you'd like to integrate into the, into the neighborhood that way.
Well, I, I can't compete with someone who's been living there for decades.
Certainly not.
But I can say I stand with them in that I'm making an investment the same way they've made in their home. Mine, this is an office building, but it's, it's our money, it's not someone else's money. And it's a, it's a big piece of our company's assets. So I'll be paying attention, probably as much or more than they are. So if something's not right, I'll speak up. And I would hope that they would, they would be happy with what this looks like and happy to be a neighbor. We have lots of folks who live on streets like Arthur who are thrilled with our current office building and how it looks and how it's maintained and cared for. And if you ever drive by, you see, we, we work hard to make the appearance to be a good neighbor, a good community member. When we showed up, I can't, you know, it was kind of interesting. There was a, a few residents nearby the building that I didn't know were part of the transaction, but they found other places to reside afterwards, so. So we think we improve upon a community and make it better and we would hope to do the same thing here.
Great. Well, we would, from my perspective as a ward councilperson, look forward to working with you on that to make sure our, both you and our residents have a seat at the table in those discussions. Colleagues, anything else?
One last question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So you're, you know, you're, you're going to be a three-quarter owner of the condo, right? Which is the, the commercial building. What, what kind of say, do you want to say in who the retail tenants are, who the other, other tenants are? Kind of what's your vision of what other tenants would be on the site? Or are you kind of like, we have our three floors and, and we're good to go?
No, we've, we've already started speaking about that. You know, we, as I understand, and I, you know, I don't know if the legal paperwork's done, we're going to control the condo association. So if anything's, I would think anything's really goofy with those tenants, we'd be able to prevent that. But no, we've already, Brent and Casto's been already sharing who they're speaking with and who's considering it. And I asked our employees to, to give me suggestions of who they'd like to see. And the first words that came, the first idea that came up was an ice cream store, so. I've already shared that with Brent and he, maybe he's working on it. But no, I'm going to, I, I'm, I, I don't, I don't want to say I'm going to veto, I have a veto over that or that I'll make the selections because I don't think I'm, I'm going to be doing that to that extent because the economic viability of those, that's their ballgame, not mine. But if it's, if it doesn't make sense, I'll, I'll be speaking up. And that kind of goes back to that earlier question is to the residents. If, I'm, I'm going to be, this is, I'm going to be there. I mean, if it's not making sense, I'm going to speak up.
Thank you.
You got any ideas what you'd like to see there?
Ice cream sounds good. I'm a big ice cream guy, yeah.
I was pushing for a, I was in an airport recently and they had a fresh juice stood in place. I was pushing for the juice store, but I don't know, the rent's probably, I'm not sure the rents support selling juice, but-
Well, for, for at least another five years, I'll be dropping my kids off at the daycare next door, so a juice place would be good.
Yeah. But those are the kind of things, those are the generally, I mean, the stuff that's going to be going in there.
Colleagues, anything else? Great. Administration, any other comments before Mr. Schroeder has a seat?
I think maybe just one item to clarify regarding the 240 parking spaces. Those aren't 240 spaces, they're dedicated full-time to Roundstone. There will be a subset of those, a small portion of those that will be dubbed, dedicated full-time, but most of those will be shared, shared with the public, shared with the, the commercial businesses that are also going to populate this space, shared with the residents, the guests of the residents. So the goal in, in arriving in a 540-space parking garage was to create as, as much shared use opportunity with that, so those spaces are as full as they can possibly be at all hours of the day. So there, that, I just want to make sure we're clear that not all 240 spaces are not dedicated just to, to Roundstone.
That's similar to how most of our muni lots work now, right?
Yes, very similar.
So basically, it's either had to pay or it's reserved until 6:00 PM, but on weekends and holidays, that's free game for the public?
Correct.
Yep, that's my understanding.
So with that, I'd thank Mr. Schroeder and his team for coming, his wife and Chris for coming in. If you don't have any questions more for him as we move into the other business, just be respectful of their time. I'm sure you'd want to talk about other components of the project. We'll, we'll let them, let them go and move on. Tracy, I don't know, Tracy's here back with us this evening. If there's anything we want to talk about specific to, to Roundstone before we move on to other topics?
Eric.
No, I think that, you know, the, the, this is great company and the one thing I just want to caution is, I know that Roundstone, you have a timeframe to get into this building. We're talking about a lot of meetings that have to be held, so maybe you could just address, what's your timeframe to get kind of a go-no-go on this project?
Well, we're clearly the sooner the better because we're, because we're out of space now and we're growing a little quicker than I anticipated. So when we first started talking to these gentlemen, we were down around 110 employees and we're at 125. So I expected in the first part of '24 is when we could get in there and I would really, we need to stay to, to schedule. So we'll be as cooperative and collaborative and as, we're not, any delays won't be on us. We'll get back and we're, and our, our relationship, our proposal, all that kind of stuff is, is not contingent on any outside parties, so we can execute when, when, when it's ready.
And then I just want to point out that we probably have a six-month period to get through the building permit, all these meetings in regards to the exterior and what it's going to look like, all those, and, and financing. So, I mean, we're pretty, we've got to really move forward and get the incentive, whatever's needed has to get done fairly quickly if we're going to stay on the schedule for Roundstone. And I think that's an important point that everyone in this room needs to be very cognizant of.
Ms. Nichols, thank you. My hope would be that, I mean, we could walk and chew gum at the same time here and, and move swiftly while also being as collaborative and deliberate as we can to make sure we obtain the highest and best use for this space for the city of Lakewood. Colleagues, anything else?
I have a follow-up for Sean, but to the Schroeders, you, you, if you would like to hear our fascinating conversation for the rest of the evening, you're welcome to stay for the Must See TV or we won't be offended if you have to excuse yourselves. But truly thank you for, for the presentation today, for coming to say hello to us in person. I'd be happy to make myself available for follow-up discussions and I'm sure that's true for their, our, our colleagues. But we appreciate the vision, the shared vision that you've got for your company and our community together. And I think it does, it is a good fit, it's a strong fit, we should work to achieve it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for having me and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Eric, excuse me, John. Director Lineiger, do you have for the rotation of the parking garage spaces, a calendar already figured out? Is it just easy as nine to six or something or is it more involved? And we'll get to that down the road.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that down the road. There's been some discussion about it, obviously, as we're, we're programming spaces and programming garages, but we'll, we'll get to the details and minutia of that as we get farther down the road.
Okay, so you just, you just know conceptually that one parking space in the garage is, is worth 1 point X, whatever X is, spaces for multiple use depending on how we can fine-tune that schedule and, and we'll, we'll, we'll have to work hard to-
Yeah, there was information that was provided in previous documentation, I have to go back through and then locate it, but it showed the breakdown in the 540 spaces. 240 were for, that were, were set aside for, for Roundstone or 140 then for the residential, which speaks to the point earlier about how much, how much parking does the residential need? We're less than one space per residential in the current diagram. And then whatever that difference is, 85 spaces were, were shared with commercial uses and public uses, knowing then that, that 240 that I just shared about Roundstone, those are also available for shared purposes as well.
So we're going to need like an airline scheduling app or something to make it all work. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So as we go forward with these discussions and I, and I expect a robust discussion here to, I'd say close out our evening, but I'm not sure how close we are to that. I want to, I guess, level set first and just say that what we're doing here as a council is discussing approving the administration moving forward with negotiations. That doesn't mean, that isn't to negate or lessen the impact or the importance of city council in this by any stretch of the imagination. I expect that we will be at the table wherever necessary and possible to, to help with guiding what is best for this site for, for the- what is best for the site for the city of Lakewood. But I just wanted to make sure we all understood kind of where we were at with this. With that, I've had some discussions with colleagues. My hope would be that for our next council docket, we will also be publishing as a council some listing of our hopes and priorities for the site. And I encourage my colleagues to get ideas and thoughts to me on that now. This is something we've been discussing for three meetings now. Your thoughts on this aren't lost already. You know, it's something we've been looking at, but I just wanted to make sure that was known, that we would hope to have a sort of a statement of priorities as a council going forward, just so that it wasn't, so that all these discussions weren't for naught, I suppose, just so that we enshrine what we are hoping for in this development as you go forward with negotiations. Yes, sir?
If I could, to that end, there were several of you had sent in questions to city staff to respond to in writing. We do have a draft of that. There's one piece of information I was working to get today that I received, and so I hope to get that finalized and out to you in advance of your next meeting, pending just an internal review to make sure everything in there is complete and accurate. So we'll do that. But also just a reminder that as, I know you have the, we have the meeting scheduled for the 28th. I shared this at the last meeting, and we're going to start losing people from the development side just with conflicts, given the number of meetings that we're having. It's just we're bound to run into some conflicts. And so you have a captive audience with you this evening. If you have questions, please get them in front of them so that they can answer them directly to you. Certainly, we'll do our best to answer them in writing and provide that as part of the record, but you have them here this evening, please take advantage of that and ask them questions as well.
No, thank you for that. While we do have the 28th on our calendar, I would certainly be willing to burn the midnight oil, help with coverage of babysitters or whatever the case may be, to, you know, discuss this as long as we need to tonight to help. Now, I understand we may need the additional time, I'm not trying to take that away or anything like that, but I just wanted to state my own personal willingness to stick around as long as we need to to keep things moving. I also wanted to make sure I welcomed back city, senior city planner Caitlin Millius to the discussion, who I'm sure has been watching online religiously throughout the discussions. Welcome back, Caitlin. Thanks for being here. So with that, where do we want to move from here? Do my colleagues have any specific comments they want to make sure they address?
Mr. Chair. Just to follow on to your excellent points about schedule or anticipating what we need to get covered. And Director Lineiger and Casto and North Point Realty Team, thank you for being here. I don't think city council is expecting you to be with us every single moment. Part of what we need is time to work amongst ourselves and to deliberate and to understand. So I think we've been in the briefing mode, get caught up to speed in public meetings, and we're not supposed to work or deliberate behind closed doors. So it may seem sometimes like we're frustratingly starting from the ground floor, but that's in part because that's state law. And so we've been asking a lot of questions. At some point, we've got to shift gears and make statements, or at least, you know, statements that lead somewhere to an endpoint. And so the question I have for the chair and for my colleagues is, you know, when are we doing that? I don't know if tonight we have the time to draft something, and I don't know that we'll have a complex draft list of points we would like to finalize by the docket deadline on Wednesday. But I could see productive time being used Thursday and following Monday, you know, work session Thursday, time reserved Monday to edit, revise, finalize, you know? And then that way you'd be reserving for potential use, just a lot of good working time for city council to, you know, we keep asking new questions, we get new information, which is superb. That's exactly what we want to do. But then we have to digest it, synthesize it, and then make some thoughtful decisions about it. And those decisions typically aren't the kind to say, well, okay, council's just going to vote without understanding the context. We're doing that in a thoughtful manner in consultation with the administration. So there does need to be, I think, additional space for us to do that work. So I'm in favor of Thursday and Monday.
And I'll leave us open to that for the moment. I'm not trying to take that away from anyone, I just wanted to clearly state that if we wanted to utilize the fact that we've got everybody here this evening, we ought to, not to mention that if we were to, if, you know, a minority of colleagues wanted to put forward some priorities for Monday's docket, that we couldn't debate that Monday as well and have a good thorough discussion about what we hold as priorities for this development as a council, so that we can be one voice ultimately moving forward.
Mr. Chair, could we potentially do that Thursday, which would then give time to the administration to respond before council contemplated a final vote of any kind, which potentially could come Monday? So tonight, like you say, I'm happy to stay late and use this time to take advantage of the presence of our expert team and shift into work mode Thursday, but not try to finalize anything until Monday.
Potentially.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Schechter, though, I think Councilman Rader also had a comment, I don't want to, why don't you fight for it? I'm just kidding.
Thank you. Yeah, just piggybacking on what Tom is saying here, and this is a little inside baseball here, just so people know what we're talking about. We can't discuss, deliberate on items when we have a quorum unless we're in a public meeting. So four of us can't get together and talk about this just outside of the room. So I agree, and I think what Tom is proposing, and I agree with that, maybe we have everybody here now to ask questions, to get the information we need, but on Thursday, we don't necessarily need the people here to answer our questions. We're just going to have a free-flowing conversation, discussion about what our priorities is, put it out there, talk it out, and see what we want to present as, kind of what our priorities are for this project. Is that a good summary?
No, I appreciate that from both of my colleagues. I think that we also have all the expertise in the room that we could hope to have, and so let's ask as many questions as possible this evening, so that we cover as much as we possibly.
Today's time for questions, maybe next, tomorrow's time.
Maybe Thursday for further discussion. Councilman Rader, without further ado.
Yeah, just to your initial question, I think we should finish up with whatever the administration has to present and then get to our points, that'd be my preference.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with that, we do have some new information to share this evening.
Director, go ahead.
As a follow-up from the last meeting. With that, I'm going to hand that over to Koby Ternok, and he's going to start walking us through and then may call upon a team from Demmett and Edge Group, who's a landscape architect, who we haven't met yet, but they're here in the audience here this evening as well.
Thank you, Sean. So we heard at the last meeting some questions around the plaza and the Curtis block, so we started looking at, you know, how can we help you visualize kind of what we see as the appropriate location to the plaza? And again, we really do think that central location, being surrounded by active uses that can program that plaza and bring you off Detroit a little bit, to have a little bit more of an intimate feel at times, but also large enough to host a large variety of events, not just large events. So I think we have some precedent images that we as a team were using kind of internally to help drive that spirit, and I'll turn it over to the experts to kind of walk you through that. But the idea is to kind of give you some context around our vision of how we're going to surround this community space and activate it and have it available for, you know, a wide variety of programming. We also recognize that this is kind of the beginning of a process, right? So all those fine details of quality and of detail aren't going to be there yet, and we know that's going to come through a collaborative process, engaging with the stakeholders and getting feedback from boards and commissions. So that's stuff that, you know, we need to enter that kind of phase to fine-tune those details. So this is really just kind of defining that space and why we think it's the right location for that space. And we see it really, and we know we're not, the segue and kind of the term sheet discussion is great, and I think, you know, we're certainly on board with that. And we see two dominos of this project that are kind of critical, and we know we're not going to get approval, but I think there needs to be kind of a, at least a confirmation of direction, if you will, on those two, and one is the plaza. Because when we start moving that around, it has impact on Roundstone's building. And then the other one is the Curtis block. And if, you know, the discussion was, you know, the plaza has to be on the corner and the Curtis block has to be a full save, I mean, that opens a lot of serious questions to us from an execution standpoint and the loss of yield and product and opportunity. So those are two things that, you know, we see as kind of dominos that, you know, need to be set, sure that the fine details of those and how it gets worked out and how it gets executed are going to come through this process, that we anticipate to be a robust and collaborative process. So in our minds, those are kind of the two things we wanted to show here. So as, I think Greg Chilag from Edge will be walking through the plaza slides, and I'll probably be chiming in too, and then Scott Demmett can kind of show you. We looked at that building that you had seen, that was the extension from the Curtis block. We took a revised approach on it that we think is not only more sensitive to the Curtis block facade save approach, but also opens up the plaza feel a lot, a lot more, and actually brings kind of a really unique feel to that western facade of that building. So Sean, if you want to scroll through, I think we have some, again, these were images that we like to use and that these guys are great at saying to us, hey, this is what this could be, so that, you know, we can visualize it as well. So we wanted to share those with you so that you could kind of see where and context where we started from. If you keep going, Sean, just some other, some other great versions, examples to show how we can activate it. And this is kind of alluding to those two dominos. So, and this is very kind of just a rudimentary site plan, but you can see that when we start moving those pieces of the puzzle around, it is hard for us to move forward in confidence if we can't lock in kind of those two pieces, knowing that there's still a lot of work to do. But I think this also helps show kind of contextually in that center site plan, the drop-off lane for the clinic, and kind of how that plaza in its previous form is open to the corner, which I know there are some merits to that, but in our mind, we have the opportunity to really fully activate three sides of that space. And the slides that we're going to move to next will show that we held back that Roundstone building from the corner so that that view into that space is really more open than I think the previous views were showing. So we brought the camera angle down a little bit to help display that, and so that when you really are at that corner, you are having a pretty good shot into that plaza. And there'll be some other slides that I think Greg will touch on that will show you the size of the plaza and that if every user that faces that plaza had private patio space, there's still a tremendous amount of space available for kind of public gathering or whether that's intimate public gathering or people just wandering through the space, walking through from Detroit, cutting through back to their home on Marlowe. So those are some of the things we wanted to show, and then I'll shut up and let these guys talk. But the, this kind of revised approach to the Curtis block, and this to us is kind of what we've been seeing really as a key driver, is it's not so much the cost to save the Curtis block, it's the space that is engaging with this huge investment of this plaza area. And this is our, this is our bookend, right? This is our gateway to this new project, and it is key, it's essential for us to be able to provide that space to anchor that side of the plaza. And in this example, Scott and his team did a really good job of being more sensitive, stepping the building back off that western facade a little bit, and kind of stepping it in two ways off the Detroit facade, and really opening up that kind of view corridor and space into the plaza and being more sensitive to that facade along Detroit. So these images start to show you kind of that more street-level view, which I think is a much better representation of the plaza and what it can be than the kind of more aerial views that we had shown you previously. So, and I guess you can, I'll keep flipping and then we can let these guys jump in, but we tried to provide some more context, just size and spacing and dimensions, just so you could digest a little bit more kind of what the space is and the opportunities that exist in this.
You do realize that ballfield analogies are a little bit loaded for us right now.
We were just talking about the...
I'm kidding, go ahead.
We were just talking about the Yankees' interaction on the way up here, so. So again, and right now, to reiterate, you know, we are not even starting to crack the surface on the details of the hardscapes, of the material plantings. This is really just to show how the space can be flexible and how large of an event it can accommodate, and if this then becomes a central focus point on your wonderful community events on Detroit, and those can still happen, you know, on the street, but this becomes kind of a central gathering spot and there's a stage. And this one, I think we like because this is really more of the everyday use, right? This is the passive walk-through, you know, cutting through from Marlowe into the plaza, and this is really just the neighbor experience, right? This becomes kind of a pathway for you to wander through, and there's all these opportunities on these ground floors to interact with whatever end-users are in those spaces and/or just come and have lunch and read a book, or if you're an employee at Roundstone or another business nearby, you know, where you can come for a little hour of break and enjoy the decent weather when it decides to grace us. So, and this was an important one, I think, that we had last week, but we didn't really cover. This was the sun study. I know there were some questions around the impact of the buildings. So obviously, these kind of walk through the solstice and the equinox, so you can see the shade and the sun. So I think you want a nice mix of both in these spaces, and I think we were able to achieve that. And this kind of just goes back to that quality of space and the approach with the Curtis block. So this is that opportunity to have that dynamic anchor space on the corner of this, you know, huge investment on the plaza and this activation of this new iconic centralized gathering location in the city of Lakewood. And I think the plans have kind of shifted from what you saw before to where they are now, from where we have brought that western kind of L and eliminated that to be a little bit more sensitive to both the Curtis block and the plaza space. This, you know, this is kind of showing the challenges that we would have with keeping the Curtis block and being able to provide that dynamic commercial retail space on that anchor in its current form. And certainly, if, you know, I think we have been fairly firm that, you know, if the Curtis block were to be carved out and not part of the project, it really would be a disservice to kind of what we're trying to create for the plaza and everything and the continuity within the development and everything that we're trying to, the synergy and the buzz that we're trying to bring to the site. And then this is the revised view from the corner of Detroit and Marlowe. That's the last one. Sorry, guys, if you have any nods.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm sure my colleagues and I all have some comments and questions on the public space and other items. I kind of want to put this in perspective, at least as I see it, that, you know, this is leveraging a community asset, a city asset, to have a public space. You wouldn't normally see, I guess, a private development that would just give away space for a public use like this. But because the city owns it and we're leveraging that, this is something we're able to put into this site plan, or have as part of the site plan. Questions on as it's currently drawn up, capacity, permitting and use, when is it open to the public, when is it not because of a private event or whatever the case may be? Could people still flow through the space, use the retail that's there? Speak to all of that for us, and we'll go on from there.
At the risk of selling a broker, some of those details, we just don't know yet. Even the ownership, we contemplate a private ownership, but could that be through a lease? Could that be through any other number of arrangements? There's a lot of details to kind of work through. We've talked a little bit about the past arrangement that was with the previous developer. We have the benefit of, that was privately owned, and the city and our community partners had access to the site for so many days. I think we have the opportunity, we have the, we have the benefit of... I think we have the, we have the opportunity, we have the, the, we have the benefit of hindsight. And so looking back on that, that probably wasn't the best way to structure it. So we need to think about a different model, about how we can put this together. But a lot of the details, we, we haven't figured out. Castor, we've had, I've had conversations specifically with Castor North Point about this and how they plan to engage with the site. It's, it's as important as to design it and get the materials and the quality right, it's just as important for them to program it too. And perhaps you guys can speak better to that than, than I can.
We've done the ownership and, and structure of maintenance and all of that differently in, in a couple of different projects. So I think we're open to that and working with, with staff on, on what that becomes. I think, and we haven't got into programming, but to me, that this needs to be highly programmed. This needs to be public. This needs to be active because in order to kind of achieve the kind of rent profile the users were trying to have in the space and to get Roundstone excited to come here, like it needs to be programmed and it needs to have people and it needs to be active. So I think that's a collaborative effort amongst us, amongst the city. I know Roundstone would like to have use of it, I think they said twice a year for kind of employee events. I don't anticipate much private programming where we control the space. I view it truly as a public, but more we own it and we have to maintain it, which is advantageous to, to the city.
And just to expand on Brent's point, some of the local users we have been talking to for the ground floor uses have expressed a high interest in programming it for their events or different opportunities for their business as well. So I, there's going to be some kind of, through, through the management of the space, some sort of kind of scheduling and I don't want to say permitting process, but there's, there's already a high interest from potential ground floor users even to beyond their private patio space, have the opportunity to have some programming.
Is there even a contemplation on, and I, you know, it probably depends on what it's being used for at any given time to answer this question, but if there were a, and it's been, you know, drawn up here a couple of times, if there was a small concert going on or whatever the case may be, how many people are fitting in there? Ballpark, since we have the ballpark analogy already thrown up.
You know, Greg, I don't know if they, we, we did do that study. I don't have it on, we, we can email, we definitely have it. We did kind of a average per square foot and we had a head count. It's been some time since I've looked at that, but we do have that in the file somewhere.
We'd be, we'd love to know, I would love to know that information if you could. And then my next question, I'll turn it over to my colleagues, comes from a eighth grade, eight-year-old Marlowe resident, curious of if there could be any playground space added in or included in the, in the public square.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, some things that aren't showing up are kind of opportunities for, for, for play areas. We had kind of a water area that was more interactive, that was kind of on the, you can see it in that one a little bit better. So there, there's some development of that. I think the public art component obviously would be well suited in the plaza. So all of that stuff kind of needs to be intertwined into the, the details of, of the final plan.
Well, we'd love to honor that eight-year-old's wishes, perhaps nine or 10-year-old by that time, to, to have a place for her to, to play. Colleagues, do you have any, Councilmember Kepel?
Thank you, and thank you for these additional slides. I think this is really helpful to our conversation from last week, so I appreciate that extra effort to, and very happy to hear you say that you envision it mostly as a public space. That's certainly my vision as well. I did have a question, kind of in connection to that, and I know we're going to be talking about term sheet, that's one of the items on today's agenda, but it sort of ties into this, and since Ms. Nichols is here too and everything's, you know, everybody's here. One of the points on there was point number 13 on the term sheet regarding transfer restrictions, which seems to me to indicate that as long as a, an incentive is in place, the city has approval rights. And the reason I'm asking about that, even though that section says for 10 years that we have approval rights about transference to a different owner, but if, if like a TIF were to go for 30 years, et cetera. And the reason I'm asking about that at this point is because in terms of the community space management, if it is privately owned and there is some sort of privately managed, you know, system for using, for, for the businesses to use that space and what that system is, at what point does the city lose control of that process? So that's kind of the reason for that question and I'm not sure who to direct that to. Yeah, Mr. Director Lanning?
So I'll start and then certainly anybody else can feel free to jump in. So the, the restriction that's being spoken about is section 13 of the term sheet. The reason we have that in place is we do, we do, we are putting a restriction on Castor North Point, their joint venture, on how they can, can't, or when they can and can't transfer the site, and then a little bit about who they can transfer it to. The reason we're doing that, and I'll explain what it means here in a second, the reason we're doing that is we're working with Castor North Point Realty. We like them, we like the product they're putting together, we want to make sure that, and they are committed to this project, they are going to be involved in this project, but we felt it was important just to make sure we state that in agreement and make sure there are terms around that. And so the way it's set up is that currently there is a transfer restriction for a minimum of 10 years pending the resolution of any incentives that, then it talks later about incentives. And so that transfer restriction would then run, if there's a restriction, it runs longer than 10 years and conceptually we're talking about a TIF that's going to run for 30 years, there would then be a transfer restriction. Doesn't mean that the property can't be transferred, it just, there's some qualifiers in there to make sure that the, it's a, it's a competent and capable developer or owner that's going to own and occupy this, make sure that they're in good standing with the city and general standards like that. As far as then, how do we then make sure that there's a robust way to maintain or that all the maintenance and everything else that we put into place, whether it's for the county community space, whether it's for the parking garage or any other aspect of the, of the, of the, of the development? There's going to be a whole host, and this is perhaps better where Castor North Point can answer, there's going to be a whole host of covenants and restrictions that are to be associated with the property. There's going to be associations that are associated with the property to help manage all of those covenants and restrictions. We're also going to have maintenance agreements for the comment, for the community space that will survive transfers. We'll also have maintenance requirements on the parking garage that'll again survive transfers. So we're trying to put together this package that no matter who's at the wheel, no matter who's sitting up at the dais, whoever's sitting in these chairs, whoever's sitting in those chairs, everything, all the hard work that we put into this is still there in the future. And so I don't know if there's anything else to add to that, but that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish with the transfer restrictions and how we're trying to protect against our future selves to make sure that all this work is, is still present in the future.
Thank you, that's the answer I was looking for.
Thank you. So you've been, so I just want to make sure I understand something. So you keep using the term programming and I want to make sure that it's not some term of art I don't understand. Is it, is it in the common parlance, programming, or when you're saying like, oh, this tenant will be programming this, like what do you mean by that specifically?
I think if, you know, if, if we had a user that, you know, wanted to have a, you know, an event on the space to help support their business, that could be in a tasteful kind of community fashion, whether that's a farmer's market or if it's a, you know, art, you know, like kind of an art fair or something like that to help support their business, that space is very attractive to them, or at least that's what we're hearing, as kind of an extension of, of their four walls, right? So, you know, if, there's opportunities probably, you know, if there is, for all the tenants to, you know, combine to have some sort of event. I think that was our goal in programming it was really just to leave the space open enough so that it could accommodate large and small events. But it has turned out to be, I think, an attractive incentive to the ground floor users for that opportunity.
Okay, so in conjunction with maybe the city having some events or...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
...profits having events, you're, you're seeing that the commercial users may want to have events that bring people into the business essentially.
From my standpoint, the plaza is the number one domino of this entire project. And it needs to be activated just about every weekend, whether that's, if it's a fitness user that has yoga in the park on Sunday morning, or if it's, there's a farmer's market the first Saturday of every month, like that detail and that, that's what I'm referencing in programming. And to me, having that calendar scheduled out almost kind of every week or there's, you know, a consistent, this happens the first Saturday or the second Friday, there's live music there. So that is a lot of detail, a lot of marketing, a lot of coordination that would come in the future. And that's what I define for the program.
So essentially, it's really, really important for you folks to get this right for your own interest, right? Because in order to make sure you have good tenants that want to come in and fill those commercial spaces, you have to make that a place that is programmable, that is welcoming to the community. Otherwise, people are not going to want to go there or visit their businesses. So it's very, so do you see it as one, I think this is what I hear you saying, that this is probably the linchpin to the entire project in attracting tenants? So you want to ensure that you get it right and it's as attractive as it could possibly be for Lakewood?
Thank you, Councilman. Other colleagues, any questions on the...
Yeah, sure, Ms. Chair, I'll, I'll jump in. And, and, and thank you, Colby, for coming. I know, I saw you last time when we were going through the process. So I'm, you know, the Curtis Block, it seems, you know, you're talking about two lynchpins on the site, right? It's the public space and it's the Curtis Block. You know, to kind of get it right for you then to go, you know, vertical on the commercial space and in the parking garage, which are probably the two pieces you need to get in first, so you get your, you know, your tenant in there. I, I heard disservice without the Curtis Block. So I, I think what that means is, is kind of the public space doesn't interact the way you want it to, you know, kind of as you would with facade save and then kind of extending the face of the building further south, I guess. Now, does that mean that the project doesn't pencil for you without the Curtis Block? Or is that, I, I guess, I'd like to explore that statement of a disservice to the site a little bit more to understand where you're coming from.
I, I think back to the point of, of making the plaza, the, it is, in our opinion, and we may be wrong, the most critical piece to, to making this successful. And I don't think putting that level of investment in the plaza, that much focus and anchoring it with the Curtis Block today, take away the costs, is the right move from our standpoint.
So I guess I'm trying to understand, I'm, I'm trying to explore that a little bit, right? Because I think this is, it's critical, you know, and it's coming against a couple of competing interests, right? We have a competing interest in historic preservation, we have a competing interest in seeing that this public space is, is well utilized and seeing that's engaging. Is, is part of the hesitation that if, if, you know, it's not, if it's cleaved out the project and you just don't know, you don't have site control, you don't know who's going to be in there, you don't know what the tenant mix is going to be, you don't know how it's going to interact with the space? Or, because I think you could still engage on the public space, depending on, you know, the real estate there with the public, you know, with the kind of park, right, or the, you know, the public space you have there without Curtis Block. But, and, and I guess, and this kind of goes into the tenant mix question that I have a little bit later, which is, you know, you have a big, do you envision one tenant in that entire down, or is it a tenant mix?
A tenant mix and a mix of uses.
Okay, because I want to, and, and the, and the term sheet talks a little bit about it, like making sure that a certain percentage of the tenants are local, which I, I support. I, I do want to make sure that we're not just playing musical chairs in downtown Lakewood where we're kind of just moving one business into another one and kind of creating more big space. I think there's going to be some of that, but I think we want to be thoughtful about how that interacts. So I'm still, like, if Curtis Block isn't in here, does this project not work for you? I guess is the question I'm asking.
When you say isn't in here?
Like, like if, if the Curtis Block was literally just not a part of the, the site?
Yeah, I, today I don't think we'd have an interest.
Okay, thank you. That's a very important answer to have for us as we consider this. And back to the public space, is, is this where I, I saw the, some references to the new community authority? Is that, is this kind of how you maybe envisioned to program this space and provide some funding for programming?
That is a vehicle that we've used in the past and, and have been a part of. I would prefer not to use a new community authority for multiple reasons. I think what we've done, most recent on a project in city of Montgomery down in Cincinnati, kind of a redevelopment similar to this, we put a declaration in place on the, on the public space and kind of had all the details and maintenance and everything spelled out and ironed out with, with multiple parties on, on that. I think that was a much cleaner way to go than the community authority. And then we just have special assessments charged back to the various users for the expenses associated with that programming, maintenance and so on.
So you treat it as an HOA as opposed to like a taxing authority?
Correct.
And you don't like the taxing authority because it kind of creates another layer of bureaucracy?
Yes, and we've been party to, when there's issues, it, it's a problem. It's just a lot of layers and a lot of documentation and I think it adds expenses. And Tracy's got probably more experience than I do with, with dealing with them.
So one of the issues with new community authority is it could actually work against having the programming be ongoing. So from the investor standpoint generally, having some type of an impasse or an issue where funds can't be expended through that body could actually cause a detriment to the tenants. So by using a special assessment type of tool, it gives the developer who's ultimately responsible for the programming and the maintenance, the ability to be able to keep that up and keep a high level of service for not only the tenants, but the residents. Whereas in a few places, there have been, I would say, legal battles that have actually delayed progress of having the various implementation go forward. So that can be an issue.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, right, I, I, I think from our perspective right on council, it's providing a vehicle that's funded for a long time that could then have the staff to maintain and program and do everything we want, we've talked about, right? So I don't care whether it's an NCA or a HOA, quite frankly. Getting, getting back to the garage, I know Colby talked about and had Donley's kind of spec up some, some pricing. And I understand the, the short girder cheaper, right, because it's shorter spans, you know, whereas opposed to the long girders, about three and a half million. And, and I'm wondering, and I don't know who built Stark's Garage downtown, you know, but the utilities seem like an issue, but I think if you plan it early and you have, you know, duck banks for them and kind of do, do that, then it's a little bit easier. But thank you for getting the number. I mean, it, it provides context to what we're talking about here. And I think for you guys, it's a, you know, if it's something, you know, we wanted to push for as a city and maybe make you uncomfortable, I think more so from a what happens to the parking garage while you're putting something on top of it? That's a real concern, I get it. But I just thought it was something, and quite frankly, I think we should continue to explore because, you know, I hear a lot about current market conditions and, you know, we can't get what we want out of the site. And I just think if there's ways to be flexible in the future, we should, we should think about them and, and potentially pursue them. Because as Councilman Bullock and others have stated, I mean, we don't have another site like this in Lakewood. So ultimately, that might not be what we do, but I think we've done ourselves a service in at least exploring it and considering whether it'd be something we could do.
So I just wanted to comment, obviously, having been Director of Economic Development for the city of Cleveland, I'm familiar with the, the site that you speak of. It was part of the original Fourth Street TIF district initiated under then Mayor Campbell. So Jackson was in for... in for 16 years. So that garage was constructed quite some time ago. It was originally not constructed to have apartments on top at a later date. It was to have apartments constructed at that time. And so what happened was, right away, off the bat, despite the TIF, they ran out of money and they decided to stop with the garage. It was at a time when obviously Gateway, et cetera, was, was coming to fruition. They felt they could make some money on it. And perhaps they did, but they went bankrupt. And the bankruptcy was long and drawn out. And finally, you know, the, the 2008 kind of crisis occurred, and that was the final death knell for the garage. Stark was able to pick it up for pennies on the dollar. And so because it was supposed to be a building that had apartments, it's not that they built it saying, oh gee, wouldn't it be great down the road, we can add apartments. They built it to put apartments on top and then just couldn't get the money to finish it. So Stark picked it up for pennies on the dollar, and then he did go forward and obviously put a building on top of it because it was structured. And that was an appeal to him because obviously it was designed that way. But other than that, I can tell you in my entire history, there have been no buildings that I'm familiar with anywhere in Northeast Ohio where someone has built a garage structure thinking that later they'll put apartments on top of it. And that's obviously because it's so difficult to get a garage structure to pencil in general in Northeast Ohio. So I just wanted to bring that, that background because Sean asked that I make sure that I, that I brought up kind of the history on the site. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
I have a question. I understand no one's done it before, but I think we're in a, and of course, I only know what I know and I don't know what I don't know. That's how much I know. God, that's going to be on my tombstone. Anyway.
Former Defense Secretary there.
Right, I know, known, unknown.
No, no, no.
But we're in a unique situation where we have a war in Ukraine, we had a, this COVID pandemic that's still happening. Inflation, rising costs and everything at the point where just several years ago, although that may have been a pie in the sky type of proposal, had a much larger plans for the space. And sure, in that case, they built the garage and ran out of money, and maybe we only have enough money to, or it depends, to build the garage and nothing on top of it. That's fine, because maybe in the future, there will be someone or the ability to, with new technologies or with better economic conditions. Nobody's building new land unless that, unless we dredge up the lake and start building out there. That I predict Lakewood being close to a city center is still going to be an attractive place as more people want to live closer to downtown and ex-urban is going a little out of fashion. That there may be the market conditions in the future for this. And it's tough, you know, as city council government officials that, you know, we're here for a short period of time, we're trying to plan for a future that is unknown, that we most likely won't be around for, but to have the ability, to foreclose the ability to do something, just, I still would like to explore it, as Mr. Baker mentioned before. I did have another que, oh, one thing I think is important for people, and I don't think has been fully explained to the public, is how difficult it is to build a garage and why it's difficult. Can you, especially specifically in the Midwest and Northeast Ohio has unique issues in terms of garages being, being able to be profitable or even pencil out?
So I would say that overall construction in Northeast Ohio is difficult. And then we'll get into the garage. And it's because the rents here are generally lower, but our costs are the same. So it costs the same amount of money. It's actually a little bit cheaper in Chicago for concrete because they, there's a higher volume. So what happens is in Chicago, developers don't come into City Hall and ask for help because the rents will support what they want to build. And here, that doesn't happen, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, because we don't have the high rents that you have in Chicago. So our, our rents are lower, but our costs are the same, or perhaps a little bit higher. And so that mismatch is why developers say, I can't get the return. So our developers could do one of two things. They could go to a different location where there is more of a match between rents and costs, and they could invest their money there. Or if they are Ohio-centric or Northeast Ohio-centric, they could come here and go to the various communities and say, we want to be partners and here's what we need to get this done. Now for garages, it becomes even more complicated because if you've been to Chicago or Boston, where I'm from originally, you pay $50 a day to park, and you don't think about it. It's, it's just cost of doing business. You go into the city, you say, well, I have to park, and you pay $50. It's, it's just what you do. You get a deal if you park every day, but it's very expensive. If you have an apartment, you pay a ton of money to park. But here in Northeast Ohio, as I always like to say, people would walk 10 blocks in a snowstorm to avoid paying to park. So it's, it's a bit of a cultural thing that people feel that they shouldn't have to pay to park. And Clevelanders are tough. I mean, we really will say, hey, I'll walk. It's like, it's a little exercise. I need my steps, whatever it is. But, so that adds to the fact that, okay, so what do you charge for parking? And then we already heard Roundstone say that, well, my employees have an idea that we should have parking and that we shouldn't have to have a cost really for that. So, so, and you want to keep that employer here because they're a huge employer and they pay really good. And that's a big tax amount. So those are the things that kind of, you know, it's called butting heads. It's like, well, how do we make this work? And it's all trade-offs. And that's what I know Sean and I have been working with the developer and testing every single model they give us. It's like, okay, you know, how can we make this work better? What can we do? So I will just say that, that that's what we look at and that's what we try to do as we go through. We try to work with the developer and test the model. Does it really work? Is this, you know, is it, is this real that they say they can't do this or that? So the other thing I just want to mention is, when you have a development site like this, and I'll look at Ohio City for an example. So Great Lakes Brewing Company went into Ohio City 20 years ago. Very little happened after that. And then, right when the economy was bad, we had Market Garden Brewing Company, no bank would touch Ohio City, no bank would make a loan. The city financed Market Garden Brewing Company, brewery of all things, because we recognized that we need something with jobs. That's technically manufacturing, we got the state to help. That was the first thing. Then the next thing was Mitchell's Ice Cream. And we went down and we kept, so your question here is, do you invest in building for potentially putting something on top of this garage? Or do you look at this as your catalyst for the rest of your area? Because we've identified several sites in the area that look like they could go if you can get someone like Roundstone, lots of young people, you've got a great workforce here. Do you invest all your cash here to build a garage that could possibly have a building? Or do you save your powder and look at where you might be able to strategically invest to just have one thing after another, after another, so that you have an overall benefit to the community? So those are just some things that, you know, we've observed. One of the things we're looking at is a vibrant communities grant from the state, and we had to show different development sites that could go if this one went, that we could get the state to help support. And so, so we did that analysis.
So you say sites that could go if this one goes ahead, that means that investment in that build, which is going to bring people in and residents in because of the 200 and something units and things like that, is going to allow other projects to pencil out in nearby? Is that what you're, or am I oversimplifying?
Yes, development begets development. There's one thing about developers, if someone says, well, if Castor could figure it out, so can I, because that's the way developers are. They all believe that they're as smart as the other guy. And it's like, well, if they can figure it out, so can I. And I'm going to take a look at Lakewood because now Lakewood looks like this. And there's a lot of people, a lot of activity. How do I find someplace in Lakewood where I can make an investment?
And now, how would development, because I know when you, when, I mean, I hear it, and you're developing areas and more and more people coming in and prices are rising and the community can change and things like that. So how, if you're just a resident, you're a resident and you own a home in the area and you see this development going on, how, how does that benefit our residents, though?
Well, I know that in your, your tax abatement policy, that you have a certain number of units that are for lower income individuals. And so that means that more people will have the, the benefit of being able to live in these, these developments. It also means that you're going to attract additional residents to the city of Lakewood, which means a larger tax base. I think 56% of your income comes from income taxes here. And so attracting additional employees to work here and residents to live and work here is a positive from a tax base, which helps everyone in the community. It spreads the cost across a larger base. So that's a positive. Plus, there's amenities in this type of a development and other types of developments where there are more and more amenities that keep people living here. And they're not moving out. They're saying Lakewood's a great walkable community. I mean, I, I happen to think Lakewood is a fantastic community for investment.
So I think sometimes we ask the wrong question. And I just, yeah, right, yeah, well, me especially. So sometimes I think I look at it and is that, okay, so is this a detriment to residents that already live here and is pushing out? But on the, and we want to prevent that. We want to make this as inclusive as possible and benefit everybody that lives here. But this, with, especially with the community reinvestment area, TIF discussion, that this would allow families that do not live in Lakewood to come and move in and take advantage and benefit from living in a community like Lakewood, like so many of us have benefited from the parks and the schools.
Great schools.
And the jobs that are here, and the community that is here, that we see all walks of life from our refugee population to, you know, working class of people working to live in north of Lake. I mean, and we all go to school together and we all walk to school together. And to bring in more families, that, that's, is that an additional benefit of these type of developments? Or?
Well, in my opinion, it is because you've set up a pretty good policy on your tax abatement that says you have to have so many units at this price point. And I think that's a positive. But as I said, your biggest thing is for you to be able to maintain your school system and maintain your parks and all the benefits that you have here. You need to either raise taxes or expand the tax base. Those are the two things that a community can do.
Thank you.
Costs go up.
Thank you. I have one question quickly, and then Councilman Bullock. I, we talk about walkability so much, and Lakewood is walkable. We have our challenges and we have things to work through. We talk about bikeability as well and have our challenges and we work through those. And I think we're better than most in that regard as well. I do ask myself, I guess as urban settings progress or improve, they tend to be more walkable and more bikeable and all of that. Where does that factor into parking garages in all this? Are we 10 years away from that making a difference? Is that factored into this in some way? I guess I want to hear some comment on that, because I do think, like, you know, do you need the garage right on site? Can, can people still park at another garage or on another street or what have you and survive just fine? Just help me with understanding where all of our walkability and all those things we talk about factor into a parking garage for something of this magnitude?
Okay, so what I'll say is that, I've been doing this for a very long time, and I remember when we required two parking spaces for every apartment unit, plus a space for every office expected employee. So we're far from that on this. And so that's one thing. But there is an expectation, while, while Lakewood is a walkable community, you want to be able to draw people from beyond the city itself who will come and visit. And, you know, you've got some great, like Lakewood Alive, really great events that happen. People come from all over Northeast Ohio, probably outside of Northeast Ohio, to go to those types of events. And you want them to be able to find the parking that they need. So it's not just, it's walkable from a perspective of for employees, for residents, it's a walkable community. That will help you attract businesses, will help you attract residents. But for beyond that, you want to bring people in from beyond that site. And so those parking spaces, if down the road, you find out that in that particular development, that instead of the number of spaces you have for the apartment, you need only half those spaces, they'll be picked up by people who come, who just want to run in and run out, pick something up. So they're stopping in. Or people who are coming from farther afield, who want to come in and spend the night in Lakewood and spend their money here and walk down the avenue and see all the things there are to see. That, having that, I'm, I'm pretty sure that when I see all the parking spaces at Marks and places like that, that says, do not park here, you'll be towed, that there are a lot of people who are looking around for a parking space from time to time because they want to enjoy an evening in Lakewood. And parking can be tight sometimes. So, so that's what I would say in regards to a walkable community. The most important thing to me is when you have your walkable community, you heard Roundstone talk about it. Now, in economic development, we start using that to attract businesses to our community because we say it's a walkable community, because that's what employees are looking for. And for the first time, like, maybe seven or eight years ago, we did that in Cleveland. We started reporting walk scores and transit scores so that we could show businesses that they should come to a neighborhood because of these scores. And you'll have that here. And then you've got someone making an investment, you've got the walk score, transit score, and then you can say, okay, here's another site over here and another site over here, get developers interested and try to get businesses in.
Side note, because you mentioned Lakewood Alive, and I assume you meant Light Up Lakewood. Is there room for a Christmas tree, or I'm sorry, a holiday tree in the plaza? Can we work on that?
Yeah, I think that's, even back from 2017's original RFP, that's kind of been the vision for that, that space.
Councilman Bullock? Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, want to respond to the point Ms. Nichols made about, you know, the way you balance your revenue is either raise taxes or grow the tax base. You also can tighten the city's, city budget's belt, which is something we worked intensively to do from 2008 to 2012. And, and we held steady on our income tax rate while many of our neighbors could not. And that's as much to do with the change of state government tax policy, which, I'm not trying to criticize our neighbors, but I am proud that the city of Lakewood did that. And I, they, well, I'm, I'm not voting for a tax increase. I think we do want this site to grow the tax base. And that is why I think you're hearing from a number of council members the interest in more density, more residential density, which is going to tee up a question for Castor right now. But we're probably not going to have time to fully discuss that tonight. But I will share with my colleagues, I had a chance to talk with a neighbor serving on the Lakewood Citizens Advisory Group that supported this development. He argued to me that the, one of the forms in which Lakewood's general economic upside would, would show up in this project might be the spillover effect outside this footprint or outside the site. So that view would, would say that Lakewood's betting on ourselves, on, on all the elements we just talked about, that the dynamism, the residents, the workers, the shopping, and the spillover to the same in adjacent parts of our downtown would be part of where the financial upside for the community comes from. Because we're contemplating, we do need to get clarity on this further about the TIF. I mean, the TIF, the TIF is a big, big public investment. We need to understand just how big and what the terms are. Because essentially, that's, that proposal would invest so much of the potential proceeds into this site, so that isn't going to then show up in the, in an increase in the tax. into this site so that isn't going to then show up in the, in an increase in the tax base in a direct sense. And the, the, the income taxes is going to do something, but only so much compared to the property tax. So all those are parameters to keep talking about. But, Mr. Chair, I do want, I do think it would be helpful. We talked a little bit on the side. Bob Gleason from Cleveland State University has an economic model that can potentially evaluate and measure some of these things I'm talking about. You know, with, with the inputs of X employees and Y residents and Z shoppers, what under, you know, conservative, ranging all the way to rosy scenarios, could we, could we, could we put numbers to for this development, this potential development in terms of our community economic path? I'd love to have some more work sessions to study that. That probably would not be coming by Monday, but we could potentially work on getting some of that analysis in May and June and so forth. Wanted to, there's, there's a bunch I want to ask about the Public Square. But first on the Curtis Block discussion, the last slide, if, could we switch to the very last slide here? Want to ask and clarify, what is that rendering showing? Is that depicting the existing brick or is that new brick?
Existing.
Okay, that, so, so this picture, because it's a, whatever, it's an architectural tool. It looks kind of new in this picture. But the intent of this is to show the existing facade saved. I don't know if those windows on the ground floor are the same or they'd be, you know, repaired or like, replacing like that. That's the intent. This is the historic facade preservation. Okay, great. And then on slide seven, can we go back up to where you were at the beginning of my comments?
I don't have numbers, so you have to.
It's the picture of the square in the west face of the Curtis Block. This one, yeah. So what are we seeing here? So obviously, the front is the facade. And then the, these big windows, I guess I'm understanding the ground floor would be kind of open and close for nice weather. It could open up and be an outdoor indoor type space. And the second floor looks like you might have a little balcony there. That would be new building?
Correct.
Okay, in this rendering, that's what we're talking about. New interiors, new building. And then, want to ask about the density that you're losing in this rendering. First of all, I should have said this at the top. Thank you to Castor for taking steps to be responsive to the feedback that you're hearing from us on both these major issues, the Curtis Block and the Public Plaza. And I think it's, it's my goal, I'm, not, it's impolite for me to try to speak for my colleagues, but I'll bet you a round of craft beer that they, like me, want to reach something that works mutually for both partners. So, so we're pushing hard on behalf of the community. But I don't think it's anybody's goal to try to force down the throat of our partner something that just doesn't work. But we are trying to explore outside the box what could work so that we could get more in responsiveness to the community that we're elected to represent and also see if it can square up and, what's the word? Like gears that fit together, synchronize and work mutually. So, and I appreciate the spirit of these revisions. And the, could, could you potentially, on the second floor of the Curtis Block interiors, preserve what's there or modify what's there? Because I think if we go down, Sean or Caitlin, to the blueprints. Next one here. Okay, so this shows the new version. I guess this level two is the same as before. But one, two, three, four, five, on, on the front, on those bay windows looking out into Detroit, you know, isn't that close to what we have there? You know, maybe you don't want to answer that right now, but isn't that an option? I think I've heard you say, on the ground floor, you want updated programmable space so that the tenants that you anticipate, you're going to have to meet those tenants' needs. You're going to want, your argument is you need, you need more latitude than you currently have. But is there some room to, to do, to do it more historically on the second floor? That's one question. Although I, I think I'm going to answer my own question because the construction that you're talking about is going to be different. But that's something to think about. I personally appreciated the activation of, on the terrace overlooking the plaza. I thought that was a nice touch. I see that you've necked down the building and you've pulled off the building at certain points. And it says in the, the detail on the bottom right here, you're losing, this version would, would subtract six units. Could you put those six units so we don't lose the density somewhere else? You'll put them back somewhere else on the site?
We are currently studying, based on some feedback, that southern quadrant, where the three-story product is, and, and looking at adding some density, some yield in that component. And then also kind of that for sale, we're studying, you know, the townhome option and extending the multifamily. We're looking at a lot of different alternates.
Okay.
That hopefully will, will make up for that loss.
You think you can move, move that relatively modest number of square feet off of that site and find it somewhere else? And, you know, part, part of the Curtis Block conversation would be, what if we even moved more off the top of that building, which would then potentially open up, keeping more of that building? I know what you're going to say. You're going to say, well, then I'm going to have to stack it on top somewhere else, change my construction materials, that adds cost. But we're thinking outside the box here. So let's say we figured that out. What, it wouldn't matter to you if we could solve that. Nothing that money can't solve, right? So if we could move that density somewhere else and, and still pencil like, like you've been thinking up to now, wouldn't that kind of un, un, unheadbutt some of what Tracy was talking about?
I, I think the, the big issue still would be the, the commercial space and the impact on it on the ground floor.
Okay. But, but ground floor commercial space is, I, I mean, there's, there's, there's examples all over Cleveland, including Tremont, where people take historic buildings and they update it and they, they find ways to connect spaces interior and have cute little restaurants that make it on national TV chef competition shows and.
I, I think, and Sean, maybe if you go to the pictures, kind of show some of the, the unique dynamics of the Curtis Block.
Just where do you want to go?
Actual photos?
Oh, the actual photos.
So these kind of walk through some of the, I don't want to say issues, if they're just the existing conditions with the Curtis Block that you'd have to deal with to kind of activate that space. And then if you look at the rear of the building and kind of the west facade, you know, whatever setback you'd have to hold to, for that new building to be to the south of it. I think there are some dynamics within the Curtis Block space that are prohibitive to providing that kind of, yes, you could cut it up and have nice kind of, you know, space that you see in Tremont and other, other spaces in Lakewood as well. But I don't, I guess our argument is it's not the space that we think should be the anchor to this iconic new central plaza.
You, you want more, especially on that western face because it's the, the entryway. Well, are you open to further conversations?
I, I think we, we can study the Curtis Block. I think, you know, it, it will be a challenge just structurally to, to maintain anything on the, on the upper floor.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate the willingness to hang in there and see if we can keep working to, to, to get closer. And then if I can shift gears to the Public Square, what are we going to call it? Is it Plaza Square Public? It's quasi-public. I'll keep calling it Public Square. So first of all, I love the Paris renderings and the Copenhagen, Copenhagen renderings. And actually, I thought the, if we go to the very first slide, the top right, can you go all the way to the European ones? Here we go. So Plaka, I'm not going to try to say it, I'll embarrass myself. The top right one in Paris, that looks inviting and charming. That's, I don't know if that's quite in a neighborhood. Notice the high-quality street lamp and the awnings bestow a lot of character there, right? The seating and in the top left, you see the classic Parisian seating. So it can be done. That may even be cozier than the space that we've got depicted. Thank you for the baseball overlay. It's a, it's, it's renderings for dummies, right? 101. It seems like a baseball infield is big without being too big. Maybe for a very large event, we would need to spill out further so the public sidewalk going into the street might, might also be opened up. But I understand on the average day, you don't need that much space. You need some, but not unlimited. And I love the stage you showed in there. I think it would be wonderful if we had more green space like the Foundry Plaza in Loveland, Colorado. I can say that without embarrassing myself. Although, of course, trampled and poorly maintained muddy grass is not appealing grass. So things to think about. But the, the, the character is radically different if it's just hardscape versus some green space. And I know you've got some pictures of kind of bays of, I don't know what the term is. There's, there's elevated flower beds and then there's elevated fountains. And, and I'm kind of at the edge of my expertise here. But I'd invite the architectural and design team, you know, what element do you envision will create that experiential identity and that wow factor? Is it going to be a Las Vegas-style fountain computerized with lasers? Or is it going to be a splash pad? Or the public art elements? Or will it be the people themselves on some kind of a, a stage that, that is programmed? I think putting some legs underneath our design concepts would be really wonderful. I, I know you can't, you're not going to do that tonight or even by Monday. But we have a really strong public art advisory board with some experts who know the community deeply. They've educated us on, in city government about how public art isn't always a monumental, Napoleon on a horse like you'd see in Paris. But it actually can be little whimsical fun things that might even rotate, that's interactive. There's a lot of potential here. So if, if, if we, if we can create intimacy in, in, in gathering, I think that's, we're, we're barking up the right tree, in my opinion. So, so I can be persuaded on the positioning of the plaza. If the materials and the vision, if we're swinging for the fences, we're going for Frank Gehry, not for what we got, oh, I shouldn't cast aspersions. But we're not going for an also-ran here. We really want to make this have a good personality. And I think I've heard you say this is in your interests, as Councilman Schechner said. We have common, commonality of interest here, right? Now, on the, on the programming, that, of course, doesn't happen on its own. We've got a partner in Lakewood Alive that's really excellent at it and they're overworked. They only work 350% FTE per person, per week. And so I don't think it's automatic that everything happens on its own, although maybe there could be a fee-for-service agreement for some management of, we, we do have talent and know-how, but the capacity is for sure not going to come out of thin air, you know?
Could I just interrupt you for a moment? You're talking about landscaping and the like. We have some people here that could perhaps speak to that a little bit and, in, in, at a high level. Just so we can have some.
So Greg Chilag is with Edge, our landscape architect. And, and, you know, we certainly would have them kind of go through their portfolio of work and kind of what has worked in these areas, what has not, to your point, having a lawn, you know, the maintenance and if, what happens when that turns into a mud pit. So they've got a lot of experience and a wide range of projects to know kind of what the right materials are to use and what the right mix and how to accommodate several different kind of touchpoints to the, the uses within the plaza.
Thank you. My name's Greg Chilag, landscape architect with the Edge Group. I, I think your questions that you're talking about are, are, are very important. You know, the, the details in the materials, the finishes. That, that's what's going to make the space alive like you think. I think at this, at this point in, in the design process where we are, at kind of a schematic level, what we're really trying to do is we're really trying to right-size that room, all right? This is really your outdoor living room, your outdoor great room. And I think what we're trying to show you as far as, as the inspirational images is what is the right size for this space? What is the right character for the walls of this space? What is the right height for this space that really makes it feel good? And, and that's where, you know, we talk, that, that's what, that domino is. It's right sizing this space to be able to program. The, the materials will, will come as, as, as the, the, the design evolves and more specifics are, are figured out about the programming. You know, whether you need lawn for yoga or, or not. And there's different solutions for all that as you get down the road. Is it live lawn? Is it artificial lawn? You know, options are unlimited. But at this point in time, it's, it's really about how does it feel? What is the right size to accomplish those things? And, and I think, you know, when we're talking about programming on this as well, you know, with the way the buildings are positioned, I think there's different types of programming that are occurring here. There's, there's kind of that natural or inherent programming that, that the, the everyday users are going to use this thing, the people that live there, the people that work there. You know, there are areas in this, this room that they're going to use every day. And then, and then there's kind of that unknown, which is that, kind of the center part of that, how, how the community is going to use it. So that, that's really what we're trying to do right now, is make this the right size and in, in the right location. So I hope that helps answer your question. But, but certainly, you know, every, every successful space has that attention to detail. And that, that's what makes it work. And we're certainly prepared to do that as we move forward.
Thank you. And your name again? I'm sorry.
My name is Greg.
Greg, thank you. Appreciate your time. Follow-up question, Councilman?
So, so right now, if I take, it's a blank canvas with some design principles that you recommend to us all to set ourselves up for success. Here are some conceptual templates we could maybe quote from.
Yes.
See, I am learning a little bit of architectural. Quote elements from these elevations.
Yeah, you know, I think of it as, we're yet to pick the paint color. We're yet to pick the, the hardwood flooring, the carpet, you know? As you think about designing a home, it's the same approach. And at this, at this time, you know, it's really about the, the size of that space.
Well, okay, but the function, I hope we have a little bit more specificity in what we envision for the function. Or do we need to do a lot of work? And maybe, maybe, you know, alongside the, the embarking upon the beginning of the term sheet work, maybe the goal wouldn't be to get, you know, further than understanding the common beginning points?
And Greg, I think, you know, those priorities to hear are helpful because we want to be careful not to throw too much into the kitchen sink, right? And then you, and then you lose kind of your, your quaintness or your ability to have, accommodate larger events if you have fixed structures in there that are accommodating all these different things. So I think hearing that feedback of kind of what are the priorities and then what fits in that space the best that we can accommodate, kind of whether it's a permanent or a temporary kind of condition, is important for us to hear. But I think that list right now is probably pretty long and I'm not sure we can achieve them all and have effective execution.
You've got to target it and be, be focused in, in some artful way. And I, I get that and agree with it. The trees are awfully big in these renderings. I don't know if we're going to be able to transplant medium-scale trees day one, are we? Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, I wouldn't get lost in the details in the renderings. I mean, they're, they're, they're just, they're, they're there to, to project just what we're thinking. I think as you look at these, I just want to step back a minute because we are at that higher level right now. If you look at these, these, these precedent images, there's some, there's some key things that you take away and you can kind of, you can translate that into what we're trying to put together on this site. All these spaces are very simple in their design, but they're, they have very high-quality materials and finishes. But if you look around them, they're generally just open spaces that are surrounded by high-quality architecture. And then they have interactions within them that, that don't limit what the potential use of that space can be. And so it can be a gathering like at the bottom left. It can be more open space with dining. It can be concerts. It can be a lot of those different things. And that's really what we're trying to set up here. There's a lot of different things that, that could potentially happen in this space. And we don't, we're trying not to limit that. There's talk about private uses. We're not talking about private uses of this or private wedding receptions and things like that. This is truly intended to be a public space that is, that is organic, that can be flexible. It can accommodate a holiday tree. It can accommodate a farmer's market and accommodate a, a, a concert. That's where we are right now. All those fits and finishes of details and is it brick pavers? Is it this type of fountain? Is, are there bollards out front? How big are the trees? We'll, we'll figure all that out as we get deeper into this. But this is, we're at the 10,000-foot level right now.
I, thank you.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, what's our budget, though? Because that's going to have a big say on. Because that's going to have a big say on how ambitious our vision is.
So, as part of this, we put together, as we've shared with the entire site, there is a robust budget to accommodate for the type of quality that we're iterating that's going to be proposed as part of this. And so, it's not that that budget is without limits, but it has been set artificially high right now, knowing that of what we're all trying to accomplish here. I don't know that we can say, well, it's a $5 million budget, it's that, but what we're showing in the concept plans, what's being shown with these precedent image, it's within, it's intended to be within our budget. Now, we have some things we'll have to work around, there might be, we talked about tug and pull as we go through the development process. There's going to be some tug and pull on this where we decide, well, maybe we don't want water features, we want this, or we want that. But we'll have to continually keep evaluating the budget, but the budget is intended to be a high-quality project and a high-quality site design.
Thank you. Just a few, were there any other colleagues that wanted to comment on the, I guess, the landscaping piece of this or anything else? Okay. A few quick things, I think we're meeting on the 28th. One, two, we have nine residents signed up for public comment, so I do want to make sure we get to those, and we will. And then, while we had the expertise in the room, I wanted to make sure we covered the term sheet with any other questions anyone from council or the administration had, just so we had it all out there moving forward.
Mr. President? I'll just kind of say what I stood up and told you here a minute ago. I think we can, I cover the, I have two main topics I want to touch on, one being sustainability, and I really applaud the administration for having a whole section dedicated to that. I don't think the Carnegie Agreement had that, so it's nice being able to look into that, dig into it a little bit, get a little better sense. But I think if we can have that conversation, Sean, are you going to be here on the 28th? Okay. So, I think just having him here would be good enough for us to kind of get into that. And then, also, the affordability portion of it, I think you've had conversations and we can just kind of rely on your intellect there to get us through that conversation. I'm sure that'll be enough to answer my conversations, my questions at least, but certainly wouldn't begrudge my colleagues if they had other questions for the developer on those points.
Councilmember Keppel, any term sheet questions? Bring it.
Great, thank you. Been anxiously waiting. So, okay, so, term sheet questions. I have these in order of the term sheet, so if you, I don't know if everybody else has it notated that way, but in point 2F, there's a requirement for traffic requirements, keeping the streets kept open and clean during the construction. Does that include sidewalks? And spoiler alert, I would like it to include sidewalks and keep them ADA accessible, is that part of the plan?
So, most likely the sidewalks center, and this was a comment that was submitted in writing from a couple councilmembers, most likely the sidewalks on the perimeter of this site will need to be closed during construction. And that's for a number of different reasons. One is that there'll be work in the right of way, there'll also be work done to those sidewalks. And then, you can see where, how the buildings are positioned along there, we're going to be working right alongside those sidewalks. And so, really from just a matter of safety for the residents or the users of the sidewalk, but also then for the safety of the workers, those sidewalks will most likely be closed. They will always require to maintain an alternative route, that route also has to be ADA accessible. And so, we will route traffic around and through. Now, the soonest availability that we can open those sidewalks up to the public, we absolutely will, but they will likely be, those will have to be closed. But when they are open, yes, they will be cleaned, they will be accessible, just like we're requiring the streets to be done as part of the term sheet.
Thank you. And then, if I can...
Please go through my list.
Okay. So, 3I about the conveyance, okay, so, developer in the city have commenced negotiating a mutually acceptable operations and maintenance plan for the community space. And this was actually kind of going back to the conversation we're just having in terms of landscaping and the right use and all these sort of things. And I just think through this as both someone with the undergrad in sculpture and a career in programming, that the form, you know, follows function, right? So, I would just like there to be, and I know this will happen some in planning, commission and ABR, but I'd really like to see some conversations, maybe with you, whoever needs to be involved with some of our community partners, to really be thinking about that use. And I'm sure that will happen, but I just want to put that pitch in there.
We absolutely commit to bringing in Lakewood Alive, another organization, Chamber of Commerce, others who have events throughout the community, so that when they do engage with this space, that it's, they've thought through it, and it's got their touch on it, too. So, that'll absolutely be part of the process moving forward.
Awesome. Great, thanks. And I was glad to hear about the tree, too. And just on my personal pitch, I'm going to keep mentioning this, I'd really love to see an ice rink with that tree, just like Rockefeller Center.
Why'd you look at me?
Just putting it out there. Okay. So, then, point 4, 5, sustainability is, Councilman Rader mentioned. And point B, EV stations are listed. And I think Councilman Rader also sent us a good summary of sustainability points that we'll talk about more, but I just want to make sure that there's, I think we brought this up before, but EV stations for the public as well as residents and then looking down the line, yes. And then, also, we talked a little bit about a rideshare pickup-drop-off area, we talked about that, so let's go about that. And then, 5E, tree goals, the language says more trees than existed prior to demolition. There weren't a whole lot of trees there prior to demolition, so I'd really like to see us do a little better with that in terms of trees and, you know, the landscaping be sustainable also. I don't know, you look like you want to say something, Director Lininger.
I don't know if it's in this slide deck, but if you recall from the previous slide deck, I think it was the previous one from the last meeting, we had some nice shots, and we can start to see it, looking down Marlowe and Bell. And so, we are stepped off the edge of the street, so it does create opportunities from additional landscaping that we perhaps haven't had in past plans, certainly didn't have in the past site. We weren't, I mean, we were overselling what was there before versus what's going to be there in the future, a point well taken. But then, there's other opportunities along the edge of the parking garage, and how do we landscape that? So, there's lots of opportunities to add trees and help enhance our tree canopy, where otherwise, a tree canopy generally doesn't exist, especially whether it's on this site or if you look east and west of here, there's very limited opportunities for tree wells and street trees. And so, the extent we can start to pull some of those elements back in, it gives us a unique opportunity to do that.
Great, thank you. Okay, I talked about trees. Oh, in terms of landscaping, well, you're here. Also, in terms of sustainability, how we landscape, I think, would be great, just looking at, the term sheet talks about aligning with our community vision and community wellness goals, which talks about year-round green space and urban agriculture. So, we talked about this, I'm Director Lininger, but not just in thinking about what kind of plantings and wildflowers, pollinators, you know, alternatives to grass, community gardens, et cetera, bioswells, so. And then, I'm sure we'll talk about this more in sustainability, but in terms of the streams, like having the trash recycling composting sort of things going in, so. I'll wait for that for Thursday, but that's kind of my list, so, thanks.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Keppel, Councilman Bullock, any term sheet questions?
Yeah, just to voice support for my colleagues who are focusing on sustainability. Those cost money. I've heard loud and clear that you guys have a strict pro forma, you're carefully budgeting for everything. If we're going to invest in sustainability, that's going to have to be budgeted for upfront if it's going to be meaningful. It pays itself off, but you've got to factor that in, because, you know, the ROI on really high-quality insulation might be eight years, solar might be 10 or 12, et cetera, right? There are a bunch of different options along conversation, but, I mean, my colleagues are correct, this often tends to be, okay, we're going to finally do it, and then at the end, oh, yeah, we're supposed to do something, and it turns out, everything's been planned differently, and all we can do is tack a little bit on it at the end. So, it's kind of a philosophy of how we build from square one, and I'm hoping we can really do some meaningful elements here. And I did, by the way, I did hear you loud and clear, like, city council, I think, it's on our shoulders to indicate some priorities upfront, so that we're not trying to do it in the middle or the end after a lot of work has been done. So, all of this is intended in a constructive spirit here. We're trying to, you know, be on front street from the beginning so that we can all either say yes or no, or work towards stuff that's in the maybe category together. So, I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. Councilman Schechner, any other questions on the term sheet? Okay. Councilman Rader, any questions on the term sheet? Okay. Councilman Baker, go for it.
One more line of questions, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for Tracy Nichols, and I suspect the answer is going to be, it hasn't been done in Northeast Ohio, but bear with me here. So, I believe the developer earlier in one of the presentations, and we talked a little bit about it, but I want to explore the line of question a little bit more, said that, like, they're assuming a 5% interest rate when they refinance in three or four years or whatever that might be after the project is built. Now, I'm wondering, right, we're deciding today, right, in the next couple of months here, a project that will live for a long time, right, in conditions, in market conditions we don't know about in the future. You know, I'm envisioning a situation whereby if the interest rates are lower than 5% when they refinance, there being some trigger that half of that money goes into community benefits agreements that can be used in this community. Has it ever been done?
So, Councilman, half of what money would go into?
So, let's say they refinance and based on their, and it's put in the development agreement early, that they're expecting a 5%, you know, the market conditions will be a 5% interest rate when they refinance their debt on this project, right? So, whatever that savings would be to them, if it's, say, 2% or 3%, could be quantified literally upfront in the term sheet or in the development agreement, and then half of that savings would be put into a community benefits agreement.
Well, first of all, I'm not legal counsel, and there may be legal issues about trying to, in some way, I guess it would be some type of voluntary action. What you could do is, in the TIF agreement, since it's a 30-year TIF, then you could say that the amount of the TIF proceeds, as you know, TIF proceeds are to pay debt, so you could indicate that if there's any excess TIF proceeds, that those would go into a fund, so you could word it in that way. But I will just say to you that, in general, I've used 30-year TIFs in my career for one reason alone, and that is, I want developers to reinvest in the property. So, when you think about refinancing, most developers, when they go to a refinance, they're not just, you know, I've paid off some of my debt and I'm taking cash out, that's not generally what happens. It's, I have to reinvest in this property because I have to keep the finishes up, I have to attract the tenants that I want, I have to reinvest in the property. So, they take out additional debt, so whether it's at 5%, 4%, you want them to continue to invest in the property. And I'll just point out, I'm sure it's happened here in Lakewood, but in Cleveland, we had many properties that were disinvested, and as a result of that, we had a really difficult time attracting, we lost a lot of businesses outside of downtown Cleveland. Independence really happened because of a lack of investment in Cleveland, where people sought new, America loves new. So, I would just say that, I'll just give you a cautionary note on that, but that would be the methodology, is that you would say in your TIF agreement that if there is any, that the TIF must pay debt, and if there was not debt, so if the developer was taking money out instead of putting it back in, if there was not a matching debt amount of that amount, that anything beyond that would go into a fund, and you could direct it as such into a city fund that could be utilized for any ancillary development type of, that you would need. So, TIF proceeds still have to be used in the general area of a development, but that's how you could do it.
Yes, thank you. And I mean, I'm not suggesting a full, right, I think it's a partial savings, right? I mean, you know, you do construction manager risk, if there's savings, you come under the, you know, the fixed price, right? Then there's a cost savings that is shared between the two entities. So, I'm just suggesting that that may be something that helps guard Lakewood against the market volatility. And obviously, to the point of the developer reinvesting, it would have to be put into something related to the project. You know, whether that be money goes to Lakewood Alive for the programming or something like that, or it goes into the HOA they're creating for some programming at the site. I'm just saying that I think it would be wise for us to put something in early to kind of guard against some of these things in five, 10, 20, 30 years.
That could go into the development agreement, and as I said, you could set up that any TIF proceeds over time that are not going to pay debt. And generally, when you have a TIF, you set up a trustee to administer that, so the city, county sends the money to the city, city sends the money to the trustee, trustee reports to the city. And so, in that mechanism, if there were excess funds, you could say that it, from the get-go, in the development agreement, developer would agree that any excess funds would go into such-and-such fund for X.
Yeah, I'm thinking about the steel yard TIF in particular, they, that money actually goes, part of that money goes to pay for like the Topath Trail and related improvement.
Exactly. And that, well, that was something from the get-go where the developer, that was part of the agreement for the TIF, but that was a, that was 100% TIF. So, it was, there was a lot more money involved there.
Yeah, and it produces a significant amount of income for the Topath Trail, yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. I wanted to ask the administration, really, if there was contemplation moving forward, should we approve negotiations on the second? With regard to the advisory council task force reconvening or still being a part of the discourse moving forward in any way, shape, or form?
So, we've had discussions about how do we keep them engaged. We haven't quite figured that out totally yet. Previously, how they were utilized, they were utilized through that planning process or that selection process. I think there were some checkpoints informally between staff and, I don't know if it was all the members or some of the members, I'm looking back, because one of them's in the audience here this evening. But we've had some general conversations about how can we stay engaged as we go through, because as I shared with you all, we have just a blessing of talent on that board or on that panel to help advise us. And so, short answer, yes, but we just haven't figured out how and when.
Would be very interested in hearing how, of course. And also, for there to be some mechanism or means, and we'll ask for it if it doesn't happen automatically, to continually update council on progress, if, in executive session, if absolutely necessary, in order to be up to date on what's going on with the negotiation.
And that's a good point, too. We also had a council designated, who's Council President O'Malley, that served on that panel, too. So, recognizing he has a resignation before this, before city council, we want to refill that seat. Traditionally, it's been with the council president, but certainly look for your direction on that.
I'm sure I know of six people who are interested.
Mr. President, or Mr. Chair?
Councilman...
I certainly welcome the opportunity to have the citizen group in to talk to us directly. I think they, I know they gave a two-page report, but, you know, there'd be some valuable insights.
Oh, absolutely. And I also feel that, as I believe Councilman Baker pointed out, their work, their work product is a great template for us to illustrate our priorities as a council for what we'd like to see in this project as well. Okay. Well, anything else from my colleagues? Anything else from the administration? Casto North Point? Okay. Everybody's been incredibly patient and thoughtful and honest and upfront, and I appreciate everybody's time here to really get through as much of this as we possibly can. We, as a committee as a whole, will reconvene on the 28th, we will, I believe at 6:00 PM, if I'm not mistaken, to continue to contemplate our priorities as a council and, of course, the issues before us. With that, unless there's anything else from anyone else, we're going to move to public comment at this time, with our first public commenter being Heather Rudge.
Heather Rudge, 13926 Clifton Boulevard, thanks for the opportunity again to be here. It's my weekly Monday night event. Lay us... Last week, when the development team was leaving, exiting the building in the stairwell, we overheard them say, well, it's really just four or five people who keep showing up about the Curtis block. And that is actually not the case. If you look on the door in the back, those are over 100 signatures to save and preserve the Curtis block and rehabilitate the building, that we got just in the last week without any heavy lifting, without any, you know, going door-to-door, just being out on the street. So these people who signed this are your, they're taxpayers in this community, they're the constituents that vote for all of you. And rest assured, there are more than four or five people who have a real concern about the Curtis block. So I hope that you take that into consideration. We are going to continue, not with any concerted campaign effort out on the streets, but we will continue to collect signatures throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your attendance at all of our meetings on the topic. I'm sure we'll see you again. Next is, I believe it's Ben Hockenhall? Hockenhall? Please correct me upon arrival at the microphone.
Actually, did pretty well. Ben Hockenhall, 1492 Marla. I've got a series of questions, and then, I guess, a comment. So my first question really concerns ROI on the project. I'm curious to learn when the city and when the developer will see a return on their investment. And I'm curious about what the planned, designed, or expected life of the buildings is. So what's the useful life of those buildings, and how does that relate to the ROI? And when do you anticipate the first need for significant kinds of maintenance on these buildings, you know, be that mechanical, electrical, structural? And what do you anticipate that cost might be, and what that might look like, and how that might influence that return on investment? And then, moving away from return on investment, I'm curious about expected monthly lease rates for the office space, for the retail space, and the commercial space, and how that relates to current lease rates in other areas of Lakewood, and what the influence of that might be on the ability to lease this space. And then, finally, one moment. Now, my comment. So what I'm hearing is that we have about six months of community engagement, community process before construction could begin. So that puts construction beginning in around, what, late '22, early '23, thereabouts? You know, current supply chain challenges, material lead times, all of that notwithstanding. That seems like a construction schedule that contemplates substantial completion in about early '24. So including an office building, all the finishes in the office building, and the parking garage, it seems challenging. So Roundstone's involvement seems to be critical to the success of the project, and it seems like their needs for space are driving, in many ways, the schedule. So I'm curious as to how those risks will be managed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You asked some really good questions. Just so everybody's aware, public comment is generally directed at the chair, and it's not necessarily a Q&amp;A session. You do ask some very good questions, though, and I would be curious if our planning director or Representative Casto would have any quick comments on those comments. But I also know a lot of those questions will be a part of the ABR and Planning Commission discussions on the topic as well. So I hope we get to all those, the answers to those questions. I expect that we will. But if there was any comment from the administration or Casto, I'd appreciate it.
And if Casto would like to go first, I'm trying to get to his spreadsheet, just to make sure that how I, what I answer is accurate.
Sure.
And I'm not shooting from a.
We appreciate accuracy, yeah.
Yeah, some of those, I'm assuming you're pulling from the first meeting, Sean. So I think a lot of the life expectancy questions, you know, we've got some buildings that are, how old's Town and Country? 80 years old, so, and some multifamily communities that are 40 years old, so they, it's a long lifespan from, in terms of a total development. You guys probably have many in your portfolio the same way. In terms of, they go through a series of renovations and upgrades over time, as windows need replace, appliances need upgraded, units get turned, carpet gets replaced, paint, and so on. So it's a pretty deep answer, in terms of, I guess, in a very broad answer. But it has a long lifespan. Generally, all of our, you know, we'll talk about sustainability next round, but I think a lot of the materials you're going in to the building today have that long lifespan because of the sustainability requirement, so. Can't remember some of the other questions. On market rates and, yeah, I can't remember the rental rate, but generally, the commercial square footage rate we're targeting is $30, which is substantially above existing market rents. Lake, Roundstone is a driver of this project, because the rents we could get on the office, if we were to rent it, would not come close in terms of value relative to cost. So Roundstone being a user that wanted to own their building, and they're essentially buying their building at cost, it is one of the main drivers to making it move forward with an office component from our standpoint. Yes, that schedule is aggressive, but they have growth goals, and we're trying to make sure we can.
Well, and considering that the crater there has its own Facebook page and whatnot, we appreciate the aggressiveness on some level. Anything else, Sean?
The residential rent rates were around 1,850 for about a 900-square-foot apartment on average through the entire, and now those lease rates vary based on whether it's an affordable unit versus whether it's a studio versus a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and we've talked about adding three bedrooms as part of this discourse. There was a question, I think the last question then, is what is the, when does the city expect to see a return on investment? And so, the, when we talk about TIFs and tax abatements, those are revenues that we're not currently receiving. So the cities, and I know this is hard to understand, but the city's not truly giving anything, we're not paying any money. It's opportunity cost that is what we're losing with a, or what we're pledging back to the project through a tax abatement and through a TIF. We do have a million-and-a-half-dollar grant that we were providing to Roundstone, which pays out over eight years. It's a reimbursement, and that works out $187,500. If you just use Roundstone as your return on investment, their growth projection is exceeding what we had originally used in order to calculate that projection, or that return on investment. That return happens somewhere in about year six. Given the course that they're currently on, it's going to happen sooner than, perhaps earlier than year five. But when then we factor in all of the income tax that's being generated out of the site, the payoff on that would be within, can't do that in my head quickly, within four years, within three years, would be the payoff on that $1.5 million grant, assuming about $600,000 a year in income tax generated just from this site. The other thing that's important to note is, right now, this site has not, or is not, and has not perhaps ever generated property tax.
That was good.
And so, yes, we're talking about TIFs, which then take those property taxes and be paid and pledge them back into the project. But there's going to be a baseline of property tax that's going to get assessed on this property, that'll be paid to, the city will be paid to the schools, be paid to the metro parks, to the library, to everybody, all the taxing agencies. Also, we're, in most cases, we're talking about a non-school TIF. Now, I've said in previous meetings, there's a high degree of likelihood, we're going to have to engage with the school districts to participate in some level on this project. But for the purposes of what we're talking about, the schools will see a potentially significant amount of revenue that'll be generated off of this site in the form of pilots, payments, a little taxes that'll go to them. And Tracy, I'll look to you to miss anything from return on investment, from income tax, property tax. And just, there's a lot of indirect benefit, too, that was talked about with economic modeling. We've actually done some of that modeling, or Tracy's group has done some of that modeling as part of some things that we're looking at with the state. We can share that, we can provide that, but it gets a little fuzzy, too, in that math.
Yeah, the software that Cleveland State uses, PMC also has, called Implan, and we did run an analysis as part of a state requirement in regards to looking at the overall impact of the site on the surrounding area and what the overall tax benefit would be. So I'll make sure that Sean has that. But I think Sean did a good job of explaining the TIF. The other thing is, on a non-school TIF, I will just indicate that the city of Lakewood gets a very small portion of real estate taxes. Your predominant income is from income tax, and the TIF taxing from and financing law under the state of Ohio gives a community the ability to take all of the, all but the school share if need be, and make that decision. So it gives you, the larger portion is the county share, and it gives you the ability to direct that into your community project, which it's unlikely the county would give you a grant to do that, but you do have the ability to use those funds under tax increment financing.
Thank you. And just to put a button on it, we are foregoing some future revenue in order to make this happen in a place that we had no revenue ever in our history previously to do it, and to do so in a way that does include the schools in some small portion, but not entirely. And Councilman Scheckner had a question, and then Councilman Bullock.
Just some clarification, because there's different ways to close gaps, and this one is potentially a, almost an $18 million gap here. And that's with the developer self-providing their own equity, certain amount, was it 14 million? Or, I don't remember off the top of my head, give or take. All right. And the thing is that some cities, what they do is they reach into the general fund, that money is there, and they use that money to pay for things, right? Like development, or they take out more debt. That's another option, which directly impacts our tax base and what we can do and what services we can provide. The options that are provided or contemplated here, if I'm understanding this correctly, are two types of tax abatements, which is the CRA, Reinvestment Area, which is what we revisited a couple of years ago to allow for certain affordable housing options on that area. So the city gets something in return on that, and then another 15-year tax payment, which those are usually stacked on top of each other for a total of 30 years, right? Okay. So if I understand that, now, what we've been saying here is that this has produced zero property tax income, right? Okay. So when land is evaluated, it is, right now, it's 5.7 acres, nothing's on it, besides the Curtis block, correct, essentially? So that land is valued without anything, how much it's worth, right, without anything on it. That's kind of known as unimproved property. All right, once, typically, if we provided no tax abatements, just for my own understanding, when we don't, if we didn't, what would happen was, Castor would build their project, then the county would come in, assess it, and now would have an improved new value of the land, because something's built on it, it's worth more, right? So what these abatements do, by understanding, essentially, that new value of when they built on it, we kind of pretend that didn't happen. And now, the city and the county and the school still receive the property tax income of what that unimproved value of the land would be prior to anything being built on it, right? Is that just a really?
Yes, just make sure that, so land, tax on land cannot be abated. So the fact that it flips from tax-exempt to taxable, you automatically get that tax, and if it goes up in value, you get that amount.
So it's just a difference between the amount and value?
When you build something on it, that's, that is where you're getting your tax increment financing. And remember, I think that the director has indicated that it would be non-school for majority, and then potentially, a portion would be, have a portion of the school. So schools get a lot of money from this project, a lot. And so, that's, you know, very helpful in maintaining a quality school system.
And so essentially, we're not digging into the city's wallet and handing it to the developer to pay for certain things, right? This is more of a deferred financing type of?
Yes, TIF and tax abatement are not out-of-pocket costs for a community.
Okay. And I think you said this in another meeting, but I think it's important to reiterate, because you mentioned an issue in Cleveland where people were taking money out of the buildings that they built and disinvesting in those buildings, and them's going to waste. Do these type of financing structures, the CRA and the TIF, do they provide any incentives for developers to continue reinvesting into the project?
The tax increment financing development agreement will have a provision that indicates that those funds can, will be used to pay debt. And so, as long as the developer has debt on the project, which obviously, if you have a house, eventually you pay it off, but you might go and take another loan to improve your home. Same with this type of commercial structure. The developer will, at some point, need to make a reinvestment. He'll go to the bank, take out additional debt, and that'll be eligible for the TIF proceeds. And so, it is a way to make sure that there is a reinvestment into the project. So it will always be the top quality that you'll see here, and it's in the developer's best interests, and it's in the community's best interest.
What happens if the developer breaks the development agreement? Oh, or the TIF agreement, sorry, not the development agreement, the TIF?
Well, the TIF has a development agreement associated with it as part of the tax increment financing. And if any provision in there is broken, the city has the right to cancel the TIF.
Which, what would that mean practically?
That would mean that you would say, you would come before council, say that this has been broken. You might give them an opportunity to cure the problem, but if they don't, then you could bring it to council and say, okay, we want to stop the TIF. That notice would then go to the county. The county would stop sending the TIF proceeds to the city to go to the developer. And so.
So those proceeds would go to the city and the county, like it would normally, like there was no?
Right. It would be just as if there was no tax abatement. It would be canceled, it would be effectively canceled, and it has happened in the past and throughout the state. That, and it is something that's monitored, both, not only will the city of Lakewood monitor it, the state of Ohio is going to monitor this as well. And your audit actually has to report on tax increment financing and indicate that you followed the rules that were set up in the agreement.
Okay, so there's a lot of eyes on this.
Yes.
Thank you. It's a good question. Trust but verify, I think is what I'm hearing. We have seven more signed up for public comment, but I think Councilman Bullock had another quick comment before.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think the residents' questions were all excellent, and so I don't want to blow past them, I want to get solid answers to them. The ROI is something we should understand for both, we've been talking about the city. Casto, I'd welcome your description of, you know, residential mortgages are 30 years typically, but I think developers are 10 or 15, you know, if you could share a little bit of that. On the city side, the value of the land is also part of the community's skin in the game. Right now, the citizens own that 5.8 acres. And so that is a major co-investment. And what is the value of the land? I'd asked for an updated appraisal, I don't know if we've had the chance to do that yet. The baseline calculation for what the tax, tax value of the land that would not be subject to a TIF, I'm sure presumes the land is valued at a certain level. So I'd be curious to hear what that baseline assumption of value is, just to inform. In other words, I think we should be very clear with the public about all of the public investment, side by side with all the private investment. I know we talked about some of that a couple of meetings ago, and frankly, I would welcome the chance for an executive session if we thought we needed more granular detail to get beneath the top lines that the, that our development partners shared with us, because I know some of that is trade secrets and appropriately private. But, and we haven't had the chance to do that since this process commenced, to potentially consider executive session discussion. But, so it's true that the TIF would reinvest revenues the city hasn't previously been collecting, but it's also true that that is a big number and a big value that the community is being asked to invest in the site. So that is not small, a small potential. So that is not small, a small potential public investment, and that is exactly why, you know, you're hearing really pointed questions from me about the quality of the public square and trying to do a good job of historic preservation with the Curtis Block and add density and a bunch of things. So, so I do think we need to understand that. And then the final question is to the administration is, are you contemplating that we, the city council is being asked to vote without understanding whether the TIF is a school TIF or not? Because that's, that's a big difference.
We simply don't know that answer yet. We're, again, we're at the 10,000-foot level with this, with this project, there's a lot of details that we have to figure out. We are at a preliminary pro forma and a preliminary numbers that we're on the fence about whether or not it, whether or not a non-school TIF can accommodate the gap.
Understood. So we're going to work through that, but we won't know in the near, near future. So I guess, you know, my argument, Mr. Chair, would be that we ought to have some language to guide how we work together going forward on that very, very important point in whatever draft document we prepare for Monday.
Okay. Well, I do think we need to contemplate the financial ramifications of this. We can't approve something that isn't known yet either, and so we might want to craft a priority that relates to how the TIFs are handled. I actually appreciate that if a school TIF is being contemplated, we're talking about it now and it isn't sprung on us at some later time, because that is something we haven't done of late. So I think we could illustrate that in our priorities in some way, shape, or form and move forward. And if that's okay, I'd really like to move on to our remaining public commenters. And with that, Pat Balash, you're next. And again, correct me if I'm wrong on the last name.
I beg to differ. This is riveting. Well, you have a right to differ. Hopefully, before anybody even looked at any of this, they got a number on, you know, if this...
I'm sorry, Pat, name an address for the record if you don't know.
Pat Balash, Woodward Avenue, Lakewood. Hopefully, there's, there's a need for this kind of space. I think my attitude about government is in line with what our decision-makers say they believe as far as a full disclosure when doing the people's work. They're here to represent the best interests of the citizens, and in order to do that effectively, of course, they need to be bright, dedicated, and ready to do their homework. Sounds like some people have been doing their homework. Cost-effective governing requires understanding the process to make those decisions. It's also important to know that there are groups that have their eyes on parting the city from their property and cash. Needless to say, the last deal on the Lakewood Hospital property was a fiasco, in my opinion. But it looks like we've gotten a second chance at this in a much improved market, and I hope people are remembering that, you know, Lakewood's supposed to be the new darling of cities. It's really important to have competent people negotiating tricky development contracts, especially making sure there is no conflict of interest. I had a woman ask me, well, how do you do that? And I said, you make sure you have an attorney that doesn't have a self-interest, that's had experience in this type of thing, and is explaining things well to the city. Again, obviously, our last contract was not so great. At a prior council meeting, several people in Lakewood's Historic Society addressed the lack of maintenance to stop the deterioration on the city-owned Curtis Building. The general silence from council and the mayor led me to believe the destruction of the building was a foregone conclusion. Now, I read that there's a suggestion to save the face of that building, and hopefully there's some decision-makers that remembered the saving the face of, I believe it was the Garfield Middle School on Detroit Avenue. It cost a small fortune to do that. Melding old with new is not always the easiest thing. The point is, is that, you know, city decision-makers have a job that includes preserving city assets. And my, from my experience, and I've kind of kept tabs on this for years, over 40, Lakewood hasn't had the best track record, you know, and I have great hopes for the new council, the new mayor. But I'd like to, you know, please ask them to work smart and do things that you can be proud of, because, you know, some of you do have the higher aspirations, and Tristan wants to be a congressman. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Ray, or any, no, just kidding. And next up for...
Thank you for your comments.
Public comment is Ken Haber.
Good evening, late evening. Ken Haber, live on 17897 with my wife. We've lived in this community for close to 37 years. I'm a lifetime member and past president of Lakewood Historical Society who has close to 300 members. Two important things to remember about this city. Its people and its history. Lakewood citizens are active and engaging. Like others in this room and in this city, my wife and I have invested our time, our talent, and our treasure in this community, and we're proud to say we live here. I'm here tonight just not representing myself, but others, my neighbors and friends who have shared the same thoughts and beliefs with regards to the Curtis Block Building. Although they're not here tonight, they are talking, they're listening, and they're reading, and some are probably still sitting here three hours later on your streaming. Lakewood history is long and rich. There are numerous historical markers throughout this city that tell stories about people and events that have occurred in this city. There are neighborhoods and businesses that are designated historical. There are homes every year that are turning, aging to be 100 years old. Two of those, there's also buildings that have been designated historical. Two of those buildings are the Otis Stone House and the Nicholson House, which the Lakewood Historical Society, along with the collaboration of the city, manage. There's also a third building, it's called the Curtis Block Building. That building is a part of the rich and long history of this city, and it deserves to be preserved. Regarding the current proposal, I have the following comments. I think you should consider carving it out of this proposal. I think you should go back and look at some of the RFPs that you received from local businesses who express an interest in investing in that building and buying it. Some are local business people who have invested their time, their business, and their money into this city. And what I've heard tonight, maybe they have some ideas, thinking out of the box, as Mr. Bullock likes to say, that maybe could contribute to how we can still salvage that building and still incorporate it with the development. It's not too late to think about and asking other people for their opinions. Finally, I've got two minutes left. I was prepared to say a couple of other things, but I appreciate the conversation, I actually appreciate the last half hour, okay? I know you've talked a lot of detail, but the most important thing, in my opinion, is how this thing is going to be financed, what are the economics of it. In fact, we finally got to, I think, is a core issue. I understand letters and tents, I've done deals, I understand this. But I think the community needs to understand how this is going to get financed. I've heard the mention of TIFs. My understanding limit, and I appreciate Tracy's comments tonight, that's been very helpful. But I thought they were just for infrastructures and certain events, so maybe this qualifies it. I know I can't get answers tonight, but I also agree, we need to understand how this all is going to be financed. We need a, what I call a use and source funding, you know, how is this all going to be funded? My understanding briefly is, the city is putting in an investment in this and deserves a return. Sounds like it's coming mostly from future credits, tax credits. That's a risk. And when you look at the environment we're in today, and as we mentioned earlier, raising the inflation rate, the raising interest rates, supply chain, and lack of workers, that's a risk. And that's not going to go away. So how's that going to impact the construction costs through this time period? Are they going to be inflated? Are they going to go up? How are you going to deal with it? You're dealing with an $18 million gap today. I don't know the whole basis of your numbers, but the economics, this is going to be a challenging economic period that we're facing going into this. So please think about that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Christine Adams.
Good evening and thank you. Christine Adams, 1086 Forest Cliff. And in the interest of time, I'm just going to thank the two gentlemen predecessors ahead of me who articulated their thoughts very well. And just to say, this is, of course, a complex issue. I do appreciate, I feel like this rendering that's up now, I acknowledge that it's better than the one I saw earlier. So I encourage our city administration and our city leaders to continue to lean on that preservationist bent. I think one of the things that will make people come to Lakewood and use these spaces is the architecture and history of Lakewood. And frankly, in Lakewood, we like to keep it a little weird. So this will really kind of move along in that direction. We like quirky restaurants with tin ceilings and outdoor cafes, and those are what makes Lakewood great. If, I mean, I wouldn't, I chose to live here because I don't want to live in some of our surrounding communities that don't have that. So thank you, council, for leaning on that and for the developing group who's hearing us and obviously coming back with some good alternatives. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ann Schleckman.
Ann Schleckman, 13480 Lake Avenue. I would like to echo what Chris said. She very much stated that we are, we like a community where there is some history and quirkiness, and I am in favor of keeping the Curtis Block Building if we can. And I think a lot of things have been done from the original plans, I know that we're switching developers and everything, but a lot of things have been taken out that are more expensive, the underground parking garage, the hotels, things that the developer's not making money on. So, and I did notice that council members were praising Mr. Schroeder for his restoring of the Christian Science Building. So in this community, we do, we do care about older buildings, so wanted to say that. Second point, disappointed that the garage is above ground and a little disappointed that the community gathering space is small. You're calling it a public square, but it is private, it's going to be private. People cannot just walk through there, there's going to be people eating dinner and, you know, it's, I don't really think it's a, it's a space for that, a public square type area. But I do think there's an opportunity, if we could do something with the top of the parking garage and make that a green space or a gathering space of some, some sort. Maybe it's going to cost a little bit more money, but I think that could be great. Rooftops in Chicago have green spaces and gathering spaces where communities can get together. Finally, I am a Realtor and I would, I'm disappointed that we're not seeing any housing units for sale in the mix of, of housing here. This community needs one-story loft-type living accommodations that are condos. We do have some on the lake, but having some downtown would be fantastic. And developers tend to want to build the four-story townhouse, and that's really not what downsizers or people that want to age and own a property need. So just wanted to put that out there, too. Very disappointed that everything's a rental. I think that's a limited interest for many residents that live here now. Maybe it'll attract some new people, but I don't think anybody here is going, that's currently here, is going to want to move there and rent. And that's it. Oh, the hotel, losing the hotel, that was, I think that would be a nice thing for the city, too. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Barbero.
Hello, everyone. Linda Barbero, 2249 Olive. First, real quick, I just wanted to thank everybody here, all the public servants, City Council, Mayor George, and I just really appreciate all your, all your public service, Sean also. And I wanted to say thank you also for the new slides, they're very helpful. I do want to say, I think for me, I'm not, I won't speak for anyone else, but actually this slide and the other view from the north side of Detroit looking toward the Curtis Block and the whole proposal, I think actually highlights the feature, the positive feature that Curtis Block contributes to the project. For me, it's one of the most welcoming aspects to the entire development, so I think it's a good thing on the corner, actually. I have kind of gotten a sense that it's been a constraint or a parameter to the urban design, but I actually feel that these slides, which were helpful to explain some of this, actually point out that it is really, I think one of the reasons it's more welcoming is that it has a scale and, of course, it's historic, which kind of pulls you, it's kind of a transition from Lakewood and what we have into what you're proposing that's more modern. So I think it's a nice segue from the whole community's fabric, built fabric, into your new proposal that you're, that you're presenting to us. So in that way, I'd like to see it as not so much a constraint, but this is really an important anchor and feature that seems to be working really well, in my opinion. And, you know, maybe you won't be able to keep the entire structure, but I just wanted to point out that I feel like it's a very, very strong feature and structure in this whole project, and you've actually presented it so that we can see that even better. I was lucky to have professors that taught me in planning, design, architecture, and preservation, that there's more than one quality solution to a proposed design and development. No matter what the constraints are, no matter what the parameters are, those are things that you work with and you build them into your solution. And there's more than one quality way to get to that. And I also want to say, it's, it's been pointed out, this is an extraordinary opportunity for the city with this site, and an exceptional solution that incorporates the Curtis Block, because as I said, it's, it's a really important anchor here. I think that an extraordinary site, this prime piece of real estate, this opportunity that we have, requires an exceptional solution that retains the entire Curtis Block, so I wanted to voice that. But again, just thank you to all of you for all of your questions and looking into this and all of your efforts to try to come to a solution together. I really appreciate all of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, much appreciated. Next, we have Julia Tok. Julia had to leave early, but did, did want to comment that, she shared a comment that she's excited about the development and is thankful to the mayor and Chief Story for their work on the project.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I can interject before we had, or press on. I just want to acknowledge what the last resident said. I think it's an excellent point you just made, that historic, historic building could be the transition point into the modern design. I think that really nails it for our community. I mean, we've got depth and character, and if we can make this successful, we're really, we're really there, I think. This rendering shows new construction that extends more deeply than the existing footprint of the Curtis Block. What would be wrong with keeping the Curtis Block and then having the back section, new construction that abuts or darned close to abuts? And this is where we get into the details. And I'm sure that you're going to want some flexibility on the interiors, but that's not far off of what you're already showing. And I think the feedback we're getting from our residents, I mean, this is exactly on point. Lakewood's unique, Lakewood likes to keep it a little quirky, Lakewood cares about our history. I just thought that was great. Mr. Chair, also, if we could, I'd like to move that we include the petitions on the door back there in the official record for the meeting.
Absolutely. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Without, without objection, if you're willing to...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next and last, we have Richard Sekov.
Rick Sekov, 1519 West Clifton Boulevard. Councilman Bullock, hold that thought, none of which you're about to hear was scripted between any other speaker. So I'm still struck by the comment last week from the developer that they're looking for a 10,000 or 12,000-square-foot tenant on the east side of the development, maybe larger. And so it looks like the plan is for fewer, larger retailers, but then what happens when, after initial leases of three years, five years, and those leases aren't renewed? And that can happen. Think about the retail roster changes that have occurred since the opening of, of other locations like Crocker Park and Westgate, Beachcliff Market Square, Steel Yard Commons, Flats East Bank, blocks in Lakewood. I mean, vacancies happen in all types of retail environments. At $30 a square foot, we're likely, won't be seeing much in the way of Northeast Ohio or local businesses, and so likely more to be out-of-region or national retailers. And that's no guarantee of success either. That's who's left those shopping centers I mentioned. And in Lakewood, just on one portion of Detroit, IHOP, Burger King, Five Guys, and Menchies have all closed in less than the last decade. The developer keeps saying that they are hamstrung by the five rectangular spaces of the commercial block, of the Curtis Block, but they're not. They don't need to gut the interior of the first floor in order to make it function as one space. Think about all the businesses that occupy space that was originally multiple spaces, and the engineering has been solved. So just on one portion of Detroit, around the corner, Ride and Workout, West End Tavern, Stella &amp; Shay, Kennelworth Tavern, Art Form Framing Studio, Salt, Brown Pleasance Florist, GV Art &amp; Design, that's four store fronts, Cleveland Vegan, El Carnicero, Beat Cycles, Deegan's, the Steel Beam is right there to see, Melt, Geiger's, Paisley Monkey, Vintage India, and just to skip to the warehouse district, Blue Point Grill at West Sixth and, and St. Clair. So for the Curtis Block, the revisions that were shown tonight have moved closer to what I'm about to say. Historic Tax Credit Project would allow up to all the five spaces in the Curtis Block to be opened east to west, and it could be varying openings. They could be as wide as my arms, they could be as wide as this room. It could function as one space if that's what was selected for the retailer to be in there. On the south side, Historic Tax Credit Project would allow an addition, one story. Think of it as a hyphen. Let's say no more than the width of the middle three bays of the five-bay building. Then to the south of that hyphen, then the building could re-expand out to the width and the height that the developer has shown in the renderings. It would keep the five upstairs apartments. I might have seen that as part of the small print in, in one diagram tonight. And as for the apartments that would be over the Curtis Block, the developer keeps saying we're thinking about having additional apartments or rearranging things on the site, so the ones that are above there could be moved. It's going to be a lot less than the 32 number that came up, and there would still be the gain of the plus five of the apartments on, on the second floor of the Curtis Block as affordable housing units. So, so for Councilman Bullock, so this does really echoes from what the previous speaker had said, to then what you said, to what I've brought up here. There is a way, we are saving more of the building, there's still a way to save the entire building, and just as a PS, the $7 million rehab estimate on that is still out of kilter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments from my colleagues? Councilmember couple?
Briefly, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everybody for your, for your comments. I just wanted to mention, we had a few people mentioning about financials. If you didn't have the opportunity to come to our first committee of the whole, we spent the majority of that meeting talking financials, so if you did not get enough riveting discussion this evening and would like more detail, you can find those online. Our first committee of the whole this month, was it April 4th? April 4th, we went in even more detail into financials, if you're looking for that.
Thank you. And I'll also point out, just so we're aware as a, as a committee, that we do have a substitute version of this resolution contemplated. It simply adjusts, I think Casto and North Point Realty is not a slash, but a "and" as two different entities. I believe it's just clarifying that, if I'm not mistaken.
... You were... ............
That'd be great. I would, yeah, I would move to, move to substitute Resolution 2214 as, as I just illustrated or summarized.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. With that, unless there's any further comment, Director Laninger?
I just want to confirm what the expectation is for attendance on Thursday. Obviously, the administration will be here. We have some conflicts on the developer's side. I don't, Tracy and I haven't had a chance to talk, but right now, we're just planning on a conversation between the city council and the administration. Is that the direction we're going?
That's correct. As I envision it, it's a conversation among the city council, really, but to have the administration here and present would be...
Perfect.
Would be helpful. Pardon me? Or... Okay. If, if we do, we'll, we'll talk offline and see if there's anyone else we need to have present, but...
We had envisioned having our attorney, Rob McCarthy, here, who's representing, representing the city on development agreement. Doesn't sound like that will be necessary, so I'll cancel him for Thursday. It'll just be, be us, unless you tell me otherwise.
Okay. I think, I think just us for now, for the moment, is fine.
Okay. Perfect. As long as we're on the same page.
All right. There being no further business of the committee, at least for now, and hoping this is a record, maybe the whole length, I don't know, we'll have to figure that out, move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's have made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.